Both Forest Service Rangers here, Eric Thomaseson from the Nine Mile and Carol Johnson from the Superior. So we're glad you guys are here for our little quarterly update to see what's going on in the forest, in our neck of the woods, Monroe County.
Eric, you want to start first?
Sure, I can start. I'll keep it fairly short. Start with the non-timber sale stuff. West Fort Fish Creek Trail Bridge got put in. Huge bridge, took a long time to get there and a lot of people's work and engineers did a heck of a job. And Rob Chaney's going up there today to write up some kind of a story in the Missoulaian on it. So I'm sure that'll be positive.
So you must have appealed to his other side. Hey, man, what about? Because there was a while they were one-voiced, one-sided.
Soldier Butler Sale you guys heard about, we had the magistrate's findings, which are kind of a prelude to the actual judge's decisions. Basically grizzly bears, road building, snags, and big game cover, elk cover, are the things that they found that we may be short on. We think we've got good responses to all of those. We've came up with, I think it's called refutations, refuting what the magistrate judges said. We're finalizing those right now. They'll be turned in this week and then we'll be waiting for the final judge's decision, which I don't think will take real long, hopefully. But I don't know how that'll go. Hopefully it'll go our way. It's ironic, you know, when you get those big fuels projects, forest management projects stopped during a pretty substantial fire season and people asking whether there's not more work done on the forest. It's an interesting dynamic. Same time, we've got, we're responding to, I think, four or five groups filed objections on Sawmill Petty. We've got that, the objections pretty much answered. The regional office came back with a couple of things they wanted us to tighten up. We've tightened those up and I suspect we'll be signing that decision within, hopefully a few weeks, hopefully by, before I leave. Sorrel Springs, that's still on track.
How big is that one?
It's a little, it's a little 160-acre project, trying to buy houses. I know Willie's pretty interested in it and it's on track, but it did get slowed down with fire season. A lot of the specialists were also people that were doing collateral fire duties. So I'll check back in on that over the next month and try to make sure it's moved towards finish line before I head out of here. And this may be my last meeting, as you guys alluded to. I haven't gotten any paperwork yet, but supposedly September 12th is my first day in the other job. It's been a pleasure working with you guys, very high caliber professional group and I've really enjoyed it. So thank you.
You're a Montana boy, you can't, what are you doing leaving?
I hope to be back.
Are they sending you to New York or something?
It's Portland.
Portland.
Portland, Maine or Portland, Oregon.
Oh, my goodness.
Just about New York.
But I'll be starting off working from here. We'll see how long it takes.
Maybe you can make some changes over there.
See what I do.
I know, I shouldn't be putting you on the hot seat with my stupid jokes in front of the camera, but.
It's been great working with you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna miss my neighbor. Eric, you have been an excellent neighboring ranger, coordinating projects, coordinating people, so I'm gonna miss you.
Well, thanks a lot. I mean, those projects wouldn't have moved along without you helping lend your people to making a move forward and I've learned from you over the last couple of years and I really appreciated it. Thank you.
Likewise. Okay, on Superior, I'll just start out with our recreation. We're getting toward the end of our camping season. We've had good visitation, good occupancy in our campgrounds. Slow Way Campground has been full most of the summer. We had one loop out at Quartz Flat that is on the National Reservation System and people get online and they pay a reservation fee to reserve that site. We tried that several years ago when the reservation system first came on and it, people just didn't really, they didn't like it, they didn't use it. But we found our highest visitation or our highest occupancy this summer was the reserved sites. And so we're gonna be looking at adding some more sites in Quartz Campground, some of the other loops, and some of the sites in Slow Way Campground next year, I think, will go on the reservation system. And then we'll always keep some as a first come, first served as well. But it seems to be that's how people are looking to reserve a campsite, just much like you do reserving a motel room, so that they know that they have a site when they get there. So it works well and one of the benefits to us is we don't have to deal with the money. The money has been paid upfront to the company that does the reservations. They take a fee for that and then we just get electronically credited money back into our account. So it saves us handling a lot of dollar bills, that sort of thing. We will be starting to close some of our sites. Quartz Flat will close September 13th and Cabin City and Slow Way Campground will have open until the 20th of September and the Logi Trail October 13th. Reason being is, it seems like in years past, once we lose our hosts, we've incurred vandalism and so we really don't like to keep them open after we lose our volunteers. Yesterday, we sat down through the Great American Outdoors Act. Savinac Nursery has been selected to get a new water system and a new wastewater system up there as well as some furnace replacement. The two cottages up there, the furnaces that are in there are World War II vintage furnaces. And as I've said before, the water system is clear across the interstate, so it has to cross two frontage roads, the interstate, the St. Regis River before it ever gets to the compound. And it's an old system, so when you get a water leak, where is it? And our septic system is old as well, so that's one of the things under that program. And we sat down yesterday because we would have to look at blocking out, closing reservations. And so in 2022, we'll have some interruption to the reservation systems. We'll be doing some window replacement, furnace replacements, and they'll be doing the design. But it looks like, according to Nate Kegel, that the actual wastewater and water system, which we'd be looking at drilling a well over on the compound side and then disbanding that distribution line that comes through all the infrastructure, probably would be 2023. And with all of that, we would look at probably closing the site for most of the year because we're gonna have major lawn area, et cetera, be tore up for that site. So working with the schools as well, because they have their outdoor education, that sort of thing. On the timber side of things, the Cruzan, the sale that we put up there, that will, they will have a bid opening next Tuesday for that one. So be interesting to see where we end up there. Still finding quite a few pockets of blowdown out there and we've had a number of people in the community that have helped clean that up. We're trying to give more people opportunities if they want to find some blowdown and we can get to it. So probably we'll put a piece in the paper or something so that we try to give anybody that's interested, if they find some opportunities to remove some of that. On the planning side, Red Bull, we're still waiting for the biological opinion from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And Greg Gustina, our planning program manager, said probably December before we get that. Superior North specialists are continuing to work on that project. And we were scheduled to go out with public scoping in September, but due to most of my folks working on that, doing some collateral fire duties, we're gonna be pushed back a little bit there. We have a unit or two up in the Deep Jam Sale, which they have not, they're just getting the roadwork done in there before they start the harvest, where the bugs have moved into some of those trees that were originally gonna be leaf trees. And so we're gonna have to go back through and maybe look at changing the prescription on that to a regeneration harvest. The fur beetle has moved into some of those big trees that we wanted to leave as leaf trees and they're going. On the fire side of things, we, our last fire that we did have was a seven-acre-plus fire lightning caused. It was about a two-week holdover up on Mineral Ridge up in the 12-mile drainage. Actually picked up by a helicopter that was working the Thorn Fire. It was smoky enough that our lookouts couldn't see it and didn't pick it up. And fortunately, it was tucked on the side of the ridge that the wind didn't hit it that day because it certainly could have taken off and got big. But it was actively burning. We were able to get enough resources on it to get it lined and it's just in mop-up stage now. So that one had me worrying a little bit for a while because it was in dead and down timber, had potential to take off. Bobby Henderson, who lives here in Superior, as one of our engine captains, has taken a law enforcement position in Dickinson, North Dakota. He will be leaving at the end of the month. And we have detailed Dan Campbell into his position. And we'll probably do a 60-day detail behind Dan. Dan does our fire prevention, so we still have some work there with signage, especially if we get into burn permits and that sort of thing. Jim Ward, as I've said, our fire management person, is retiring the end of November. Will really miss Jim and all his experience, leadership, and work that he's done with the LAPC. The outreach is out there right now for that position and I've been receiving quite a lot of interest in it, so we'll see. I think one of the biggest deterrents that I'm seeing so far for people out of the area, of course, is housing costs. I called Judy Stang and a couple of the realtors and, as you know, we don't have a lot available on the market and anything that's pretty livable is in the $400,000 range is what I'm hearing, so a deterrent for some people.
Has there been some locals apply for it?
I have local interest as well as some out-of-area interest, Lori, so far. On the silviculture side, we're gonna be, this fall, we're gonna be doing about 700 acres of netting on the seedlings to keep big game from browsing them. We're also looking at doing stocking surveys this fall for the planting that we did this spring to look at the survival rate of those. Talking to Carly, our silviculturist, we're expecting we're gonna have quite a bit of tree mortality. The soil moisture was not good this spring when we planted and it turned so hot. What they have looked at, especially on south slopes, finding that anything that was in like rocky soil or where near rock, that it just heated up so much that it actually, the heat killed the cambium on the seedlings. So thinking that we're gonna have higher than usual mortality with our planting. Thinning, we're, this fall here, we'll be doing about 200 acres of thinning, some of it up in this side, Johnson Camp and through there, some in Green Bean. We're gonna be doing some white bark pine cone collection here very shortly and they take those cones over to the Cordillay Nursery for seeds to, for the white bark pine program. Planting next spring, we're gonna be doing about 900 acres of planting. We had looked at about 1,300 acres, but Carly said the nursery just called and said they've lost, due to the heat, they've lost some of the pine and some of the larch that it just got so hot. Even with the irrigation, they could not keep them going. So we'll be, we'll be doing 900 acres and then if there's any excess trees, which sometimes they are, Carly has already put her order in, if they're for the right elevation and the right species, that she'd like to take any excess trees. So somewhere about 1,000 acres is what we'll be doing in next spring. On the engineering side of things, yesterday I reviewed and signed a contract package with Nate Kegel for a new precast concrete bridge that will go in on the North Fork of the Little Joe, about seven miles up. And so that'll be going out for bid and probably will either be fiscal year '22 or maybe '23 before the actual work, just depending on who ends up with it and what their work schedule might be. Our office is still closed as far as letting people in, just trying to keep COVID out of our workforce. But we, people just come, they ring the doorbell and Amy or Rachel go out. We still sell maps and everything. We just are careful about letting people in since we do get a lot of traffic off of the interstate as well as local. We do have people calling wanting to know when stage two restrictions are gonna be released and they review that, I think, every Monday, right, Eric? There's a committee. And with the rain we begin, I'm thinking maybe next Monday we may see some release of that. Also getting calls on the closure for Diamond and Cliff Lake. I talked to Matt Davis, the ranger on the St. Joe, and they still wanted to keep that closed, but I'm thinking maybe by next week that we'll get that open as well, hopefully.
Well, they kind of have that Dolly fire pretty well contained, didn't they?
Yeah, it's getting in pretty good shape, so it really hasn't moved and they've received more moisture, but first of the week, they still didn't want to release the road closures. But the only other thing I can say is I had a request from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service wanting to look at a couple areas of possibly on the district for a release of grizzly bears. The CC Divide and up in Breen Creek. And I asked for those to be taken off the list because the CC Divide is a pretty popular trail, hiking, hunting. We have outfitter camps up there getting a lot of views. And so they did it at this time, but I expect we're gonna get further requests. And then, as I understand the process, if there's an area that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would like to locate or relocate grizzly bears on, then I believe there's a public process where there, it would be open for public comment and goes from there. But that's the first I've heard of it. And so I'm sure more to come on that.
Well, I know that we signed a resolution clear back in like 2013, 2014 that states that they have to consult with us or at least keep us in the loop as to the release of grizzly bears, so.
So keep your ear tuned up. Lori, are you on the, do you meet with Fish Wildlife?
Yeah, I'm on the Citizens Advisory Council, so I will definitely, well, we're having a meeting here in a couple of weeks, so I will definitely take the resolution and remind them.
And this came from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, was the request.
But they wouldn't be able to do that without involving fish and game, would they?
I would, they could be fish and game and there would be a public comment process. Eric, do you know any more about that?
That's how it has been handled. I would, I would hope that's how they're gonna do it.
Okay. So this is the first I've been notified of it.
Where's Breen, Breen Creek?
12 Mile.
12 Mile, upper 12 Mile.
Yeah.
So Karen, my only comment to that is we need grizzly bear reintroduced around here as much as we needed the wolf reintroduced.
Yeah.
And we had just about as much comment on that as probably what we're gonna have on the grizzly bear.
Okay. So stay tuned. That's the first I've heard of it. So that's what I'm.
I know that's not your, your deal. That's how I feel about it. They totally ignored everything. They still ignore everything. State Fish and Wildlife still ignores the fact that we have way too many wolves here. And I'm sure they're going to ignore the fact that we have too many grizzly bears when it's.
Especially since one of our main, our main assignments or charges as commissioners is also maintaining the health and public safety of our constituents and they may have been able to kind of poo-poo that away with the wolf. But I have to keep my dogs in a kennel now at night because I've had the wolves come by three times to lure them off the porch at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. And I find out that one of them with a collar on is actually, has a den way up at the head of the gulch behind my place with pups. So I don't know how long, but even not a threat to me, but it really is a pain in the butt when you can't live your life normally, let alone if you want to go hike on the CC Divide and then part of your family members is killed in one of these odd maulings that's only increasing with, with more bears and more population and, you know. It's nice to know we have bears somewhere up there in the Bob Marshall, but I don't feel comfortable having him 12 miles from St. Regis.
Anyway, just to keep you, that's the first I'd heard of it and I'm sure we'll hear more.
If I could have one quick go back, I believe we had 145 fires on the forest so far this year. Ninety, or 137 of those were put out at 10 acres or less. And to give credit to the Superior Ranger District, there's five ranger districts, they've put out over half of them. So well done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kudos to our crews.
Yeah, they, they did some good IA to catch some of those. And then we were fortunate to get resources, both air support and enough crew too, to help. That's the main thing.
Well, and you caught one up behind my house.
Yeah, we got some too. We got about 30.
Again.
But I think they're up to over 70 or something.
No, I didn't realize that that spot that that was one of the roads that you opened up, so I didn't think they could get there on foot and they did.
That worked out.
Because it was like that, you know? That road hadn't been there for them to drop down into it.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing on this, decommissioning of roads is ridiculous is.
It can be helpful.
It can be, yeah. I mean, it can be grown in, but the prism is still there and if you can go in and open that road to get to a fire, it makes all the difference in the world. So, and that's what Kelly was concerned about that Monroe Mountain one, was, oh, there was a lot of roads decommissioned up there and he was concerned of, oh, you know, hopefully they can get into that one.
Yeah, those roads were decommissioned back in the Knox Brooks, so.
Yeah.
Something like that, long time ago.
I do have one question, Carol.
Yes.
Remember when we had the conversation about the Mill Creek Road out there and where the trail, River Trail takes off and the dead and dying timber?
Yeah.
So I had a talk with the postmistress down in St. Regis. For whatever reason, that's road from where it turns there, where you can either go to Sherman Oaks's place or you can go out to the River Trail. They call that road the South Side Cut Off Road. And the postmistress is concerned that fire department, UPS, whoever, if a house, and there is a house going to be built out there now, that maybe there would be confusion because of the South Side Road.
Oh, okay. I read that email yesterday and I, I, well, Nate was out and we were going over the contract. I had him look at this email and I couldn't quite follow it. I thought they were talking about the South Side.
Yeah, I did too.
When you say South Side, that's what everybody thinks.
Okay, I wasn't putting.
I talked with Jerry Doctor on the phone and he's down on the Thorn Creek Fire with a brush truck. And that's what he said too. He said, you know, if you can take South Side off of there, call it the Mill Creek Spur or whatever. And Matt Pierce, the guy that does our mapping, he said, well, find out who, who named that road because they, Monroe County apparently didn't name it. I believe it's Power Line Access Road is what it actually was built for.
So the Mill Creek Spur is what you'd like it to be called?
Yeah, anything but South Side.
Okay. And that's that piece from Sherman Oaks's?
Yep, right there where the gate used to be.
Yes.
Yep. That used to all be, well, there was a piece of state land there and then there's two pieces of private now.
Oh, okay. I know where you mean now.
And then it goes on out, but they call that whole.
To the trailhead and then the trailhead takes off and it goes out to that BPA town.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so you'd like that.
They call that whole thing on a map. I don't have the map with me, but they call that whole thing on a map, the South Side Cut Off Road.
So you'd like to see it called the Mill Creek Spur?
Yeah.
Okay. I can make that happen. I can make that change. We'll work with the people, because I asked Nate, but I, I was thinking something.
Yeah, it was too when I read it. I was thinking the South Side Road too. And then I saw St. Regis then.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, you know? And they call Dry Creek when you turn off there, that's the South Side Road.
Yeah. It, and Jerry. It becomes Cold Creek Road.
Yeah, yeah. Jerry said, you know, take the South Side off there if you can and that'd be fine. Name it anything you want to, but.
Especially like she pointed out, the only difference was one has a spade, South Side, one's all South Side. That's pretty hard to distinguish between those two.
Yeah. Okay, I'm glad you clarified because I was confused.
I would appreciate it if you could.
Yeah, I think we can do that. I asked Nate if, about renaming and he said, it's just a matter of working with our person in Missoula that gets into the database and we can make a name change pretty easy. So I'll work on that with Nate.
All right.
Okay.
That'd be good.
I'm glad you clarified because I, I was gonna go up and ask Candace for some info.
Well, I asked her, I did. That's where all that email stuff started was, I said, how'd this get named then? And she said, I, she sent me an email back after two days and she said, I don't have an answer. I don't know who named it. And I said, well, it's either gotta be Forest Service or BPA named it, you know? BPA doesn't own it. I know they don't own it, but.
Okay, I got it now.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions for either of the Rangers? I kind of think they're wrapping up their little updates and knowledge sharing.
Regarding the reservation system, that's gonna be, how's that gonna be handled as far as online reservations are concerned? How are people gonna do that?
You go in, there's a website, recreation.gov, and our campground rentals and cabin rentals are all listed on it. It's a national reservation system. And so you get on recreation.gov and then you look at what area you want to go to and then it lists the campgrounds or the cabin rentals, whichever. And it's a pretty easy site to navigate through.
So when's that gonna begin to act?
We do have some sites currently on the reservation system out here at Quartz Flat and all of our cabin rentals, the Thompson Peak Lookout, Up Up Lookout, and the rental facilities at Savinac are already on the rental system. That's, that's how you rent those. And starting next camping season, we will add some additional campsites on there.
Like the Cascade Campground and the Cut Off Road, those kind of spots too?
Yeah, I didn't ask Heather about Cascade, but for us, we're gonna probably add some more sites out here at Quartz Flat and some at Slow Way probably.
Now, are you talking about campgrounds that normally have a host? Now, are you talking about campgrounds that normally have a host?
Yes.
So the dispersed campsites, for example, up 135 on the left-hand side of I Cascade, some, I don't know what it's called, Much Water.
Much Water.
Now, that's an undeveloped campground. Is that gonna stay that way or?
That will stay that way this time, yes.
As well as any other undeveloped, I have no any more. Well, I guess there's one up Joe Road.
Yeah, we have up the Joe Road and, I mean, we have numerous dispersed sites.
Yeah.
Missoula Lake, Diamond Lake.
Fourteen Mile one, isn't that one?
Down at the Peninsula there. Those are just, there's no charge, first come, first served in those sites.
Okay. So it's more of the established pay type campgrounds?
Yes.
How many grizzly bears are we talking about? Where are they coming in often?
Um, that I, I don't have. I just got an email, you know, with a list of sites. And there were two listed for the Superior Ranger District, CC Divide and Upper Breen Creek for asking if those could be potential sites for grizzly bear relocation. And, and that's all the information that I was given. And my response was that I, I didn't wish those to be, uh, because of, there's a lot of public that, that uses those areas.
And that email came from the US Fish Wildlife Service?
Uh, it came, yes, down through there and then through Dave Robleski, who ranger at Plains, but used to be our wildlife biologist.
Where's these grizzlies coming from? Why are they relocating again?
A problem.
We wouldn't know, we wouldn't know that. You'd have to ask Fish Wildlife Service to be the primary. And then Fish Life and Parks would probably be working with them on releases. But Fish, but US Fish Wildlife Service would be the agency that'd be making those calls and trapping the bears and moving them. We're just on the receiving end telling them what the consequences are for where they put them.
And so we don't have anything to say about that, basically is what you're saying.
Oh, I'm not saying that. Members of the public can say whatever they like, do whatever they like.
Dwayne was saying that there was public listening section or sessions held regarding the wolves. Okay. And it didn't sound like it was very well, there wasn't a whole lot of input.
I don't think that there was any public sessions here. Yet, yet we have probably one of the largest populations of wolves in the state. And, but, you know, everywhere else that there was public sessions, they didn't want to have, did it anyway.
Well, yeah.
And just put them out there.
Pushback.
Yeah, put them out there, they'll take care of themselves. Though they haven't, you know, they, all they've done is multiply and eat our elk herds. And that's a proven fact.
Yeah. That was number one meal. So Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yeah.
What we would need ideally would be a listening session where people actually attended and listened and pushed back.
It's kind of a, but it's kind of a tricky deal getting our fishing game, the Montana fishing game and the federal fishing game in the same room. Because in my opinion, the federal fishing game doesn't really give a damn what we think.
They, they work for a larger population. So we have forty-two hundred people here. And they're representing people from New York and Alabama, Mississippi. And they say, everybody wants the wolves. So you four thousand people really don't matter. It's the good of the other part of the country.
The people living in New York that don't have to live with wolves.
Right, right.
Well, unfortunately, it sounds like wolves too old with this grizzly bear thing. And you guys don't have anything to do with this, of course, but I'm just thinking, okay.
Yeah, the only thing we can do, like Lori pointed out, we have, since the wolf thing, we've made some resolutions that, hey, we have to be notified and included in a, in a conversation or a debate. And we would, if, when it comes to our plate, our attention, we would want to have it here in the room and have everybody in the county come to participate. So that people can hear loud and clear what the true majority of our constituents want to hear and say and wish. Because in the past, when they just do it, you know, it's too hard to undo it.
And it does say in Montana law, when it comes to predators, that number one is the safety of the public. But they seem to forget that.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll keep you updated that, like I said, I just got the email. That's all I know, but I will keep you updated and hear more.
I have a dossier about that thick of vanilla folders on the wolf from nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five to and through twenty-fourteen. And I will tell you, it was criminal what they did.
As Laura says, they don't care. They don't care because nobody speaks up.
I'm, I'm originally from Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. My wife and I went all over the state of Idaho fighting this introduction of the Canadian gray. And we teamed up with a gentleman by the name of Ron Gillette. Maybe somebody in here knows him.
That lives here?
No, he's from Stanley, Idaho.
Oh, there's Ron Gillette that lives here.
We went to the legislature in Idaho and we had a couple folks down there that said, if we get a initiative petition, we can rule it out. Well, that almost flew. We needed thirty-one thousand signatures. We got forty-eight thousand. We got overrun with people who were non-voters. And they threw them out and we couldn't get it on the petition. And we later found out it was wolf people that did it to us.
Well, lesson learned.
Lesson learned.
Let's not let it happen again, Grizz.
Yes. And that's, and that's why I brought that up. Because the grizzly bear has the same potential as that wolf. Uh, and you have organizations from the larger metropolitan areas that are pushing it hard.
The problem with the grizzly bear here is it's gonna really impact our force management.
Of course, yes.
That's what's gonna hurt.
And when they move the goalposts, I mean, it's one thing to have, you know, five hundred grizzly bears in Montana. But then when they suddenly change the recovery number to this or to that, like it with the wolves. We're way over the recovery number that they all agreed on in nineteen ninety-four. And here we are, they're wanting to get it back on the endangered species list because they just keep changing the rules. And that's what's really frustrating. Hey, you said, and now you're saying this.
So basically what you're saying, it's all by design.
It seems to be. Get the foot in the door.
Now, you mentioned the law of Montana, because I'm new to Montana. Idaho, I lived for twenty-something years. You say there's a law that protects us if we're endangered by one of these so-called animals that are supposed, we're supposed to be saving. Do you know what law that is?
Did you say it was a constitutional thing?
It's in Montana.
Oh, it doesn't necessarily, not necessarily phrase that way. It says that county commissioners are responsible for the health and human safety of their residents in their county.
Understand.
So we're saying that should include, I mean, they could kind of minimize it with a wolf because, oh, wolves don't bite people and they only do. But a grizzly bear, we know from this year, grizzly bears do hurt people. So that argument's gonna be a much stronger argument if they want to introduce a grizzly bear. Because we commissioners are saying, hey, that's gonna be unsafe for our residents. I mean, and then, like you also pointed out, then it's gonna also hurt our economic ability to harvest and have loggers and a sawmill. If every time we have a sale, they're gonna say, well, the grizzly bear walks through here once every ten years and that's his thoroughfare. You can't touch this or do that. I mean, we're gonna have a whole host of issues that really affect our, our people that live here, our residents, from, from their physical safety to their economic safety.
Snowball very easily.
Yeah.
Hunting too. We talked to a business owner here not too long ago in Montana. And he, he's not from Mineral County, he's from a different county, full of bears. He says he loves to come to Mineral County to hunt because he's not hunted by the grizzly bears in his area. So that's bringing those guys over here, you know, to get grizzly bears here, so.
He was referencing an area above Helena where they have a lot of bears. They just can't even hunt in those areas. Don't feel comfortable there. They've become the.
Well, yeah, not to mention, I mean, the hunting economy itself. I mean, I mean, a lot of hunters used to want to draw tags and come here from all over, out of state and pay the high dollar. And they're going, why bother? All I did was go over there to see a couple of bambi's, you know.
Yeah, we, we can't afford to lose that.
Yeah.
When they introduced the wolf, they had a federal register that came out. I printed it off. It's that thick. And it says plainly in there, the economic impact of the Canadian gray wolf is not to be brought into question. They didn't care.
No, no.
I still have that doggone thing if you guys would like to see it.
I think with that, there's a bigger concerted effort. You can call it conspiracy theory if you will. But there's a lot, a lot of NGOs, as you have pointed out, that really would like to see humans out of these areas. And I think wolves are a part of that and grizzly bears are a part of that plan.
All by design.
Yeah.
All under the heading of agenda twenty-one.
Good. Bingo.
Well, wow, you, you brought some life to our meeting. We're always boring. We talk about, you know, outhouses and campgrounds and look at it, Carol.
I saved the best for last.
But you keep us, keep us surprised because that will be something we need.
That will be a hard topic.
Well, I know it would be something of interest, so I wanted to make sure at least that you were aware of it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
Because I know the people of the county would be interested.
No, I've got a Citizens Advisory Council meeting next Wednesday in Missoula, so I will definitely.
And maybe you can find out a little bit more.
Danny too, because he's on, sits on it too, so. I mean.
Another question for this young lady. You're talking about the rental, rental campgrounds. That, is this gonna continue to rise as far as how many campgrounds that you have to pay for to get to? I watched this happen in California. And now you can't even go in the woods in California unless you have a permit to go in. So I'm kind of concerned that, if it's on the rise, I'd like to know.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's on the rise. The developed campgrounds that we've been charging have been fee campgrounds for.
Years.
Fifty, fifty-plus years. And we haven't added any new ones at this time, in that fifty years. And Quartz Flat, Cabin City, Slow Way and Trout Creek. And we haven't added any in fifty-plus years.
They're usually, they're just the developed ones that have a couple of vault toilets and some cement picnic tables and place the back end. And there's a little box and you stick your five-dollar bill in there on the honor system. So all Carol is saying is I'd rather have someone go around there every day and try to collect these five-dollar bills and then get them into the office.
I understand.
Yeah.
I totally understand.
Hopefully it's not.
Exactly how it happened in California.
Hopefully it's not a sign of.
And they're really good about, um, developing new campgrounds that are non-paying ones, like the Peninsula one down there at Fourteen Mile. They, you know, um, developed that. Um, they've done some stuff at the Much Water one and.
Don't get me wrong, I think a developed campground is, is nice, but when we have to start paying.
Right, yeah.
To go out in their home woods, it's kind of interesting to me.
Yeah.
It is. And I guess I, I would hope that there would always be ample opportunity to have that. Because there's a lot of people, uh, obviously that don't need or don't want the highly developed site. They just want a place where they can have a rock firing, a place to pull off and camp. And so.
And they dump their garbage. There's trash cans there. I mean, you gotta get rid of those.
So that's a piece of, important piece of recreation too.
I mean, in California right now, you can't even go on a walking trail without paying a permit to walk in your own forest.
Well, I hope we don't see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now's the time to think about that too, because.
Absolutely.
We're gonna have a lot more people.
Exactly.
You're recreating a bunch more people.
And then, and then just to be devil's advocate for a minute, that, that's also what's exactly bringing these hordes of people to Montana is the fact they don't have to pay for anything. Our boat launch, for example, down there, the Alberton Gorge, we are inundated with people from Spokane, Coeur d'Alene and other places that just bring boat, no pun intended, boatloads of people. And they all park for free, float for free, leave their trash everywhere. Call our sheriff's office when their stereos get stolen at the parking areas. Call our search and rescue when their boat flips. Then they just go back to where they're from. They don't even pay a dime in property taxes or anything. I mean, they, they might buy a bag of ice at the little local market for their beer cooler, but that is about it. So conversely, we have the problem of everybody coming here and not paying for things that we end up having to pay for and clean up their mess. I mean, uh, we have beautiful rest areas in Montana. And I never used a rest area. Everybody in Washington uses the rest area and I don't, but we pay for those rest areas. So we gotta figure out a way to get all these visitors to pay their fair share. I'm not, I'm not saying we need to walk in the woods and have to pay for that. But when people are using trash cans, highways, uh, public services, sheriff's office, ambulances, uh, you know, we gotta figure out how. We only have four thousand people and we can't keep paying for the road. They beat the hell out of that road with all those cars going down that little frontage road to and from the boat launches. Just amazing. I grew up down there and it was just a ranch access road. And now, holy cow, you could have a seven-eleven down there and you'd be busy all day long selling beer and ice. And I, and I hate it because they don't pay anything at all. And we just get to sit here and work our butts off and pay, pay for the roads and pay for the sheriff's office, pay for the search and rescue and pay for their idiocy.
Point very well taken too. And, and, and along with that, being from Coeur d'Alene, what's happening there is California and Washington is overrunning North Idaho and they're coming over here. They're tired of fighting the, the tides of people over there. So this is a park, walk in the park for them.
Yeah.
They're tired of fighting what they created.
Absolutely.
Right.
Could, could you not initiate a launch fee?
I propose that to the, so I don't know if you've ever noticed, but on your registration in Montana, again, it's only people that live in Montana pay for this. When you pay for your registration, on the bottom, there's one that says, it's interesting, Randy, because they call it, they don't call it an opt-in. It's an opt-out. So if you don't know, it's a nine-dollar thing on there. It goes to state parks and, uh, something like five dollars goes to fishing accesses and four dollars goes to Virginia City, Nevada City, state park, you know, you know. And then there's a small fee that goes to, I don't know, something else. But anyway, uh, years ago, uh, before Danny was in the legislature, I had our legislator draw, draft up a bill where twenty-five cents of that nine dollars, just a quarter of it, would go to the Alberton Gorge impact fee to help us with the road and with all the services and problems. And so they drew it up and then they call it the fiscal analyst for legislative services. The gal called me back and said, Commissioner, the legislator didn't really know how you want this to work. But just so you know, it's against state law to carve out just a, a little bit for one, one area, one county. We can do your twenty-five cents out of this nine dollars and put it in the bill, but it would have to be split with all fifty-six counties. And I said, well, by the time that gets diluted, I said, don't bother. So we, I don't know. I've been trying to come up with ideas like that because.
In Washington, you mentioned the registration. They, they have an opt-out. It's automatically added to it. Yours is an opt-in.
No, it's opt. If you don't know it, if you don't know it, you're paying nine dollars. I, I go up there every time and I have to opt out. And I, and sometimes the gals forget to tell you that too, but it's kind of a sneaky way of getting people.
I don't mind paying it, but you know.
But you want to be able to choose to pay it.
Sure, choose to pay it.
Yeah.
Small fees for traumatic brain injury.
But then again, that idea of mine on the registration would only be for vehicles registered in Montana. It's not doing anything for those visitors.
That's why I was wondering if you could just have a launch fee, you know.
Well, a launch fee, a launch fee for all out-of-staters. I have seen, I have seen that before.
Have you?
Absolutely, Oregon and Washington.
Here, it's becoming a real issue doing that though, charging a slight resort tax. We can't opt-out Montana residents. I work with the AG's office and it's non-constitutional. They fought it several times in court. Although with hunting and fishing licenses, out-of-state residents pay different rates. But they can't do it with the resort tax. I think that's still an issue that needs to be brought forward. But, um, the, the launch fee, if everybody paid the launch fee, wouldn't be an issue. And you know, if you want to launch your boat, you pay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would, I don't think I'd want to go that route because we live in one of the poorest counties in Montana. You know, and a lot of people, that's their recreation. And if you don't fish or hunt or float the river, you're probably not gonna stay long here anyway. But to, to ask a fee of somebody local, and, and that's what you'd have to do, I guess. You know, it doesn't seem that that would be very fair to our, our local people.
And, and the thing too, is that Alberton Gorge is unique in the sense that no, no local person wants to go down there and try to fish, or fish because it's so damn crowded. Everybody that's there is out there to woo-hoo, do the gorge and they're, and ninety percent of them are not locals. And 90% of them are not locals at all. The locals will take a quieter area, you know, Forest Grove down to Big Eddie or Big Eddie down. Those ones aren't the problem. The problem is this theme park, Silverwood, Alberton Gorge, that's bringing everybody in. That's causing us a problem.
Maybe just a launch fee at that specific one. And the locals can always find somewhere else. It's a tough deal, you know, with residents versus tourists, you know. It's just like that resort tax.
Tourists might think I'm our largest industry.
Dandy, I worked on it a lot and we went nowhere with it. You know, it's because of the, being able to charge non-residents differently than residents.
Well, we're all local people here. And I know we can think back when we were small kids growing up. None of us would have ever thought today, the number of people that float and fish the Clark Fork River now has to be, what, 30,000 plus? I think I saw some figures from the Fish Wildlife and Parks. If you think back when we were grade school age kids, we never would have thought today how many people would be on that river.
Yeah.
People used to dump their garbage in the river.
Well, I think the sewers used to go and never did.
And people used to put old cars in the river during high water. And people, St. Regis said, well, we saw the old Buick go by. And to now think of, you know, what that's become, so.
Now they're all behind the Knox and Dam, right?
I mean, you know, if you think from now, what's 20 or 30 years going to be from now? When you talk about it, you really can't vision some of it.
Now's the time to prepare.
You have to prepare.
It's coming, so we've got to be proactive rather than reactive.
Yeah.
Randy?
I think that non-residents versus residents issue covers a lot of bases and it's something that really needs to work through the legislature. It's become a real problem everywhere, in every community, in every county, you know. And we need to work diligently on it because these tourists need to pay, you know. I keep referring back to the resort tax, but you know, St. Regis has that resort tax that was at 3%. They've legislated it to go to 4% if they want it. The burden on the infrastructure is done by, you know, it's applied by the non-residents, but the residents are paying at the same rate, you know. And I tried to work towards it, like I said, I met with the AG's office and they shot it down entirely because they said that you can't exempt residents from the sales tax or the resort tax. It's discrimination. But there has to be a way to do it. There's no reason for all of us to be paying for the burden they're putting on our infrastructure.
I say put a toll at Lookout Pass. Even if we got 1% of what come through there, just Mineral County, it would.
Perhaps just put the toll booth at the port of entry at the trucks.
Yes.
Four-wheelers here pay, trucks pay here.
There has to be a way to do it. But we're all going to have to work on it because it's going to become an increasingly bigger problem.
If we don't work on it, I just, I just, as an attitude, I've got relatives that live on the coast in Washington State, and I want to go to the mail, come in on State Park, which is my favorite place to go. And that was before the population boom, of course. But I was just used to being able to park and hike around the trails or go down the beach or whatever. And of course, here in Montana, if you've got Washington plates, you stay parked, you can, that's your, that's your engine speed. But basically, I couldn't do that anymore because they wanted like 30 bucks or something, you know, just hike around the trails. And I had to drive away. I can't go there anymore. I just don't want to see it become like that.
Right.
I hope I don't ever see these at work, prices, local people from enjoying.
Watching it.
I watch it happen. One of the cases.
Well, hey, thanks for coming, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Good seeing you.
Well.
Good luck in Portland, buddy.
You're going to need it.
Take your flat jacket.
No problem. See you guys.
Yeah.
Send us pictures, Eric.
Yeah, see, are you going to be here for just a second? I mean, I'll catch you outside here.
Okay, yep.
Send us pictures from Portland.
So Laurie, I probably need to schedule next month's meeting with you folks with the 24th work.
Let me see here. September 24th. Same time?
Same, 9 o'clock. Okay, got it. Well, thank you for your time and thank you for the public comment. Always good to hear discussion from local people.
One more thing, Carol, the Cruzan Timber sale, is that on the map here? I was looking over here at the map and I see the Cruzan Mountain.
Yes.
Does that, is that the scope of the Timber sale? Okay, I'll check it out.
It is. Well, they're going to open the bids Tuesday, so I don't know how that goes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol.
Carol, I have a personal question. And thank you for keeping me updated on fires.
Yes.
The citizens really appreciate it, so.
Hello, everybody.
So what's it called again? Okay, from the camera. Meeting 11 o'clock with Jen Donovan, a request to create an account funded by COVID vaccine billing to be used for COVID response, apply. An account, you mean an account fund?
Yeah.
Account funded by, okay.
Yep. So basically, as you know, we bill for immunization services, just for our regular vaccines that we give flu shots and all the childhood ones. And we're billing for the COVID vaccine, just the administration fee, if people choose to give us their insurance information. We bill it once if it gets denied or whatever. We don't ever send a bill to the people. But I'm hoping to get that income and create a new little fund that we can just use for COVID response, whether that's paying my people for overtime or paying for signs at the fair or whatever. So that's pretty much it.
Oh, okay.
I just want to use that money that we're bringing in to fund COVID stuff.
So Jessica would be.
I guess that's a Jessica question.
Yeah, Jessica could probably create that.
And she'll be in at 1:00.
Okay, sure.
But well, yeah, so we'll bring it up to her and see if that's a simple thing.
Yeah.
Then have her get with you and.
Sure. I think, I don't know exact, in my budget, I estimated that we'd bring in 20,000 in vaccine income because we have Tisha and she's currently billing right now and we're just getting checks, which is great. So I don't know if I'll quite hit 20, but I think I will. But yeah, just in regular vaccine billing. I just want to use this money to pay for the things that are still happening. Yeah, so that's it.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll ask Jessica and then.
Yeah, Jessica will be in at 1:00.
So where's the money currently just kind of going to, after she creates the fund, she'd probably have to transfer it or something, so.
Yeah, so she would just create a new revenue fund and then we would take that money that was coming in for COVID billing and we just put it into that. Because we fill out revenue.
From that day forward, that's created, okay.
Yep, because Tisha can see, we can see the vaccine income that comes in and who it's for and what invoice it's basically paying, you know. Like if I were to go receive my flu shot, I can tell that this income that came in is for my flu shot, not for a COVID vaccine. So we would just separate it and put it into that other fund. Okay.
All right, well, we'll let you know after, you see Jessica, that's a simple thing for you.
That's simple. Thanks. All right, you guys, any questions?
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You're wanting to start a fund, a billing fund for COVID vaccine, which you already get money from the government with. And you're not going to charge people, but it's a billing fund anyway. That sounds like backwards, under-the-table type thing to start billing people with.
So we are.
You don't charge for vaccines right now because they're supposed to be free, correct?
They are free, yes. So this is an administration fee.
Administration fee, you get that fee from the government already?
We don't.
So the money that you're getting from the federal government, you're saying doesn't go to anything but the vaccine? Vaccine itself, but if I can prove you wrong next week, or even by 1:00, what would you say?
I think that you and I should sit down and have a conversation.
No, 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 no. We don't need to sit down and have a talk, ma'am. I've been in Medicare field since 1969. So we don't need to have a talk. I'm just asking a simple question so you can answer it. That's it.
Okay. So whenever we give a vaccine, Medicaid, Medicare, and health insurance allow us to bill a certain amount of money for administration fees and for, like if we purchased the vaccine with our funds, so the county allocates a certain amount of funding that we use to pay for like flu shots and, you know, all the childhood immunizations and things like that, then we can bill a certain amount. So all of that money is predetermined, the amounts that we can bill. This is standard practice across, you know, the country as a whole, so.
No, no, that's not third-class, the whole country is. You don't need to throw that out. I know too much about it.
Okay, so we are billing, as we have been told we are allowed to, for the administration fee. So folks are given an option when they come to get the vaccine if they want to provide their health insurance information to us. They do not have to, and if.
But it's coming to that. That's what they're trying to do.
I don't know. I'm not going to speak on that. We give them the option to provide their health insurance information to us and we tell them if they do, we will bill the administration fee. There will never be a cost to the patient.
If they give you the information.
If they give it to us.
Wow, okay. So you've got to obtain information and they won't get billed if you get that information. Interesting to me.
Hold on, hold on. What did you just say? I'm just trying to follow what you said.
I just said exactly what you said.
So we give them the option to provide us their health insurance.
Information.
If they choose to, we tell them that we're going to bill the administration fee.
So basically, you're using the insurance companies as well.
We're just billing according to what's allowed to bill.
I understand that.
To help fund, yeah, just to help.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
What would compel a patient to give you their insurance if the shot is free?
Yes.
That insurance typically pays for an administration fee to cover the nurse's time for administering the vaccine and all of like the background work that goes with it, you know, vaccine management, data entry, all that kind of stuff.
And I understand the administration, but as far as the patient, like when somebody sits down and they, you know, sign up to get the shot, and you present them with, you know, if you have insurance, you can opt to provide that to us.
Yes.
So we can bill, do you tell the patient?
Yes.
That you're billing them for an insurance or an administration fee? So why, what, in my mind, why, like, why would a patient want to if it's free?
Exactly, exactly.
You know, I can't speak on.
Because I feel sorry for you?
I don't know. I can't speak to why somebody would choose to give us their insurance card, but what you just outlined is not the exact words we use. I usually say, the cost of the vaccine is free. If you have health insurance and you choose to give that to us, we will bill your insurance for the cost of the administration fee. You will never receive a bill from us. We won't rebill the insurance if they deny it.
And the information that you're gathering goes to the insurance companies, correct? Because they're going to ask for that. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, so we use, we bill.
So you're giving the insurance companies private information that you, on a voluntary basis, want. Because you need that information to give to the insurance company. Am I saying that right or wrong?
We are billing their insurance company for the administration fee.
It started 14 years ago, ma'am. I'm very aware of it.
Okay, you probably know more about this than I do. I don't, I don't know, I don't know your history.
Well, you work for the Health Department. You should know a lot more.
I am telling you the process that we go through when we administer vaccines, whether we're talking about flu, childhood immunizations, or COVID. Not required for them to give us insurance information, we absolutely do not require it. What I said to you is in general what we.
In general.
Give them the option.
Why even ask? If it's not important, why even ask it?
Because giving these vaccines has placed a huge workload on our staff. And so if we can recuperate some of those costs, then we can use them, like I said, to start paying for some of the things that we need to do for COVID response. Like I said, like paying for overtime or purchasing signage or, I don't, I'm not sure.
No, ma'am, I understand what you're saying. I really do. And you've got a job to do it, so you have to do it. And I do understand that.
Okay.
But to me, you're using your patient to get money from the insurance companies. That's not right. On a voluntary basis, of course. And that's the reason why insurance companies right now, why people can't afford most of them. But that's, you know, I understand you have to do your job. And I appreciate you doing your job, believe me.
Okay.
I got one more question that's been bothering me for quite a while. There's been a rumor going around for a long time that like the hospital comes in and a patient comes in, the flu or from the Chinese Communist virus or whatever it is, you are, you get a payment from the government per patient, the hospital does. Is that true or is it false?
I don't know. I don't know.
She would know, but it is true.
How do you find that out?
Jen is not from the hospital. She's just our county health nurse.
Oh, okay, then I won't ask no more.
But these questions, you should know. Working for the Health Department, you should know these.
Sure, you know what, I would.
You should know all of these answers.
Well, I, what we're doing is we're doing what we would do for any vaccine. But I actually would appreciate your, the questions, I mean, if you could write them to me. Like, I, I'm just not, I'm not right there with you with where your concerns are. And so I feel like we've been operating as we would in response to anything, you know what I mean? Like we have been tasked to give the COVID vaccines on a voluntary basis. We voluntarily ask them for their.
I understand that, ma'am. My biggest concern about the COVID-19, first of all, the year 19 is the reason why it's called COVID-19. COVID's been around for over 30 years. It is a flu, basically, and it was developed definitely by our own people. And I can prove all of this. You don't, you don't need to believe me. You can check it into it for yourself. But my concern is you're still using people for the insurance company to get information. That concerns the heck out of me. And you're supposed to be working for us, believe it or not.
Well, she is working for us. And I think the only question that they asked them is, do you wish to opt into this? I mean, I don't, she isn't forcing, and what information are the insurance companies getting that they don't already have if it's their insurance?
Oh, there's a lot of it they don't already have. That's what they're trying to get.
Is it, are you, are you thinking that the information we're providing to them is the fact that they got the COVID vaccine? Is that what you're talking about? I'm just trying to understand where we're talking about.
Where it will possibly be, being there's a lot of people wanting to start a mandate that you have a card.
Yeah.
It's a process and I understand that. There's, the government's done more processes than this in my life. And it's worked on a lot of people. But thank you for asking this. I appreciate that. It really did.
Not all the way, probably above Jen's pay grade to.
I understand that.
To change or.
I understand that.
Yeah. But yeah, it's something that people are wondering about, but I think that it's a nationwide thing. Like she takes kind of.
Doesn't make it right.
No, but she probably, I don't know if Jen could change it.
Well, the ARPA money too, the biggest portion of that ARPA money is to go to this COVID-19.
And the administration funds, sure.
Yeah, you would think, I would think, that you would, your department would be receiving a certain amount of money for administration fees. I don't.
I don't know exactly about ARPA funds. They've been talking about it a little bit. I do, I can tell you that the COVID-19 virus has placed a tremendous amount of workload on our department. Our department is not very big. And so we do try to seek out those funding sources when they become available to us. And we'll continue to do that. I mean, we, we're, we're good stewards of the county's money and, you know, we. I mean, we, we're, we're good stewards of the county's money, and, you know, we budget, everything is an open book, so I'd be happy to sit down with anybody and talk through it all. I just see that this vaccine income could be a possible source for us to be able to play, pay for things like overtime and things that aren't covered by other funds. So, I don't know.
I appreciate you speaking, I really do.
Sure, I appreciate your feedback. I'm not opposed to any of, I like conversation. I do not know everything there is to know. I don't understand your, you said 25 or 30 or something, incredible number of years in health, in healthcare. I just know what we do standardly, and we see an opportunity, and we're going to use it because we have incredible need at the Health Department. So, that's it, no.
Is it more of a staffing issue than anything, out of curiosity?
Yeah, we need more staff. I mean, this week, we've had almost 40 COVID cases. We're still giving flu shots, I mean, COVID vaccines every Friday, and school's starting next week, and so many of our Health Department staff, like, for example, me, I'm the director, I'm the school nurse, I assist you with, I give immunizations, and I respond to COVID. So, I have a lot of different things, and with school starting, we're required to make sure everybody's immunizations are in compliance and health conditions are in place, and staff are up to date and ready. And so, we've just had a lot of work. COVID has added a tremendous amount of work, and yes, we need more staffing. So, I'm always trying to find funding that I can secure, hopefully in a more permanent way, so I can hire more staff to help with this. It's a pickle, it's not fun. When I said I don't know, I don't understand the back inner workings of billing and all that stuff and the bigger overarching thing. All I know is, right now, like you said, I have a job to do and I'm trying to do the best I can.
And we appreciate that, too.
Yeah, and I appreciate your, I appreciate your feedback. There's a lot of things you brought up that I can't speak to. I'm just, I'm just a little mom in the Health Department trying to get this done so we can move forward, so.
All right, well, thanks, Jen.
Yep.
I'll shoot you a check later this afternoon.
Yeah, we'll find out from Jessica, you know.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Your husband's still flying skies around here? Okay. All right, well. Public comment. All right, so, we have public comment, so, how are you, Mr. Merrish?
I'm fine. Anything from the back rows?
No.
You've already done your thing?
I've driven my-
He was on the agenda, he smoked till he blew in the face, so.
Well, I'm David Merrish, and I just want to report and let you know that the Car Club this week is sending out checks for $600 to six graduating students from Monroe County that we're awarding scholarships to.
Right.
And Patty Curtin is actually sending the checks out, and we send them to the financial aid departments of the colleges and universities so that the money is used for books and lodging and things like that. So, yeah, we're happy to do that, and this year, we can, we raised it from $500 to $600 because we had a very successful car show, and a lot of people showed up, and I think we netted four or $5,000 this year, and the Car Club was able to do the scholarships.
Good, good.
And the latest report on the golf tournament is, we have two teams to go, so we're already at 15 teams, and I know that each of you will get together and put a team together, right? Are you all golfers?
No.
Laurie, you're not a golfer?
I am not, I've golfed twice, twice in my life, and that was, the last time I golfed was when the golf course was still down here, so that tells you how long ago I've golfed.
When you were a teenager, right?
Yeah, teenager.
Right.
There you go.
Yeah, so we're still looking for two more teams, businesses or groups of four, that would like to play in the tournament, because all the money that the foundation makes, actually, we're putting back into the hospital, and if you didn't know, we're putting up a new flagpole right there on the ground, so the hospital will have its own flag pretty soon. Jason has, you know, contracted for a company to put the flag up, so everybody will see it when they actually come to the hospital now. So, I think that's a nice gesture by the foundation.
Yeah.
It won't get in the way of the helicopter, will it?
No. So, that's sort of my report for the week.
All right, very good.
Yeah.
So, six, are they, you know, spread out, the kids are there?
Yeah, we choose one from each school, and then we have two from two of the schools. So, every school, I reach out and talk to the head counselors, they send our application out, and the students that are interested fill it out, and then the committee evaluates the applications, and then we choose the one that we feel, you know, and one of the students that you all know is Brian Mask, and he's going, I talked to his mom yesterday, he's going to Western in Billings.
Dillon.
Yeah, and so, he's one of the scholarships, and I just read on the front page of The Independent that we're going to have maybe a good football team and a good volleyball team, and my granddaughter, Madeline Dre, is on the volleyball team, so I will be going out and watching her games this year.
All right.
So, I think it's going to be a fun fall season for Superior High School.
Did you have much, very many applicants for the scholarships?
Laurie, I'm surprised, and the answer's no.
Yeah, I know that, you know, I sit on the Soil Conservation District, and they give out scholarships to all three schools, and for the last, you know, two, three, four years, they have a tough time getting applicants, and even the DOI Task Force, they said on that, and they do scholarships, and-
Well, it really amazes me that any high school graduating senior could not use the money.
Yeah, yeah.
But for some reason, and I haven't really talked to all those students, but, you know, I'd love to know why, if you're graduating and you're going to a college, a trade school, or a university, that you could not use our scholarship, your scholarship, you know, Liz Gupta's group have, you know, they do scholarships-
Yeah.
-but they're all the same. Do you have any idea, you guys have lived here, why do you think the college, the high school kids are not applying?
They have to work to do an application.
And I do know with the, with the car show, David said six, but it's really only five, but we gave, we gave a scholarship to each one of those, of the ones that applied.
Right.
So, we didn't turn anyone down.
Right.
And then we were able to give more money. So, we used to only give the three at 500, so now we're up to five at 600.
Yeah, well, I know the one, one time on the Soil Conservation District, you know, they, I think they gave, like, $1,000 to each school, they got one applicant, and so they ended up giving that applicant all three scholarships.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to task the counselors why, why the kids aren't more aware, or are they aware and they just don't want to do it?
Now, they're aware, all the counselor, the head counselors notify all the graduating seniors, but you guys have lived here many years, do any of you have any ideas why these young people are not replying?
Well, not all of them go to college. I mean, some stay home and do their things. I don't think that anyone who's going to college did apply, so we may only have the five or six.
You'd think there'd be a little run on the trade schools, though, you know, I mean, it, yeah, there's always more kids, I think, that want to do that than college bound, but I don't know.
Right, but we will give, you know, students that are going, as Patty said, to trade schools, but we're not getting the applications.
Yeah, that's nice.
I know the first year that I was involved with helping with the scholarships was St. Regis, every single one of the students were going to college at that time, so we did have to pick and choose that year, but that was quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. Come in again next week.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right, take care.
Public comment, and then we'll be back at one o'clock. Starting off our afternoon of budget hearings and-
Our afternoon of delight.
I know it, I know you're so excited.
We're going to start off with Jessica Conley here today, how are you?
Yay, I'm good, how are you guys?
Looking nice and blue.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. So, what do we have? Okay, so, what I'm thinking is, we'll just do like, kind of just do an overview first. We'll look at, you know, how many mills, how much more money we're able to collect this year because of our increase in mill value and new construction or whatever. Then we'll look at kind of a cash summary by fund. I've kind of allocated mills, adjusted the taxes, but obviously, we're short, we always are, usually we have to get money from PILs or something. And then after that, you guys, then we'll decide kind of, if there's anything that you want to cut or change, roll back on, go from that.
So, before we get into the weeds of that, real quick, just off the top-
Of course.
-ask your opinion on this and how easy or can it be done or not, but Jen from the Health Department was wondering if a new fund could be created where she can deposit the, so COVID shots are free by the government, oh, you already got her heads up.
No, I was talking to Laura earlier, and I know, so she collects an admin fee, like, so, like, for me.
So, right.
Like, I turned in my insurance card, she gets some admin fee, and so Laurie was just telling me about that, and so I'd-
Because you want to be able to use it to help pay for some of these administrative overtime and contact tracing time and all that stuff.
So, I would not create a separate fund for it. It's not going to be worth enough money. I would put it right into the general fund immunization revenue line item, like everything else, and help support, because her general fund expenditures, she, we keep getting more and more people being paid out of that general fund instead of the grants, and so it's significantly higher, I would just put it right in the general fund under immunization revenue. It's not, how much, what did she get?
She was thinking about $20,000.
Yeah, I think it just needs to go right to the general fund, to help offset all of the expenses that are in the general fund now. That's what I would do. We don't want to set up a fund for $20,000. I mean, we're gonna, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I'll let her know if she wants to come down and bend your ear on it, that you can get more educated on what you just said.
What else?
All right.
Anything?
So, that was, oh, that's, yeah. Oh, another thing before we end the weeds, the ARPA money that we have to request, I've sat down with Kilhan and started to do it, and then, of course, there's this big requirement from them that somebody be lead, somebody who is lead puts their name in, their social security number in, a copy of their driver's license.
I heard that, yeah.
So, do you know how other counties are, is that just the clerk and recorder, is that Jessica Conley?
Yeah.
The county chairman of the board.
You were talking about bumping up your fee.
Right. No, Nicole, Sanders, Nicole, the clerk and recorder, slash treasurer, I guess, didn't. But she had a hard time with it, she was really struggling.
I know at one of the town hall meetings that they had said that, you know, they're going to ask all these personal, want this personal information, and, you know, it's-
Weird.
Yeah, I mean-
It's very awkward, like, I wouldn't want to give that.
Yeah, in order to get their-
We had some of them in here.
Anyway, so.
Yeah, so, no, so they, she did, she's, she did it, okay, but.
And if she doesn't, then Dawn will.
Chipping wing.
Oh, yeah.
Not a problem, yeah.
Got to have a backup plan.
I'll take your social security number and all that, and we'll get you in there. I think we need to add the fund for that ARPA money.
Right, yeah.
I'll do it. And we're just, you're just going to draw it all down, right?
We're going to put it into that fund, and then when we get clear guidelines on how we can spend it, then we'll spend it.
Start spending it, but in the meantime, we just start the process of getting it, all of it, okay. So, I'll create a fund, and then I'll just budget the whole amount, so it'll already be there, so when it does come in, it has a place to go. Okay. Anything else before we get started on this? So, pull, so in the front of your binder, you have kind of all of the, all of the really good stuff, you have this, which is-
Cash reserve.
Yep, you guys have seen this before, beginning cash, expenditures, revenue, ending cash, but pull these two pages out, and we'll look at them side by side.
Okay.
The sideways ones, is that?
Yeah, these, yeah, the sideways ones.
Revenue. Correct?
Yes, sir. So, one. So, one is, so let's go like this. So, we have, do the 21, 22 on top, and then we're going to compare these appropriations. We're going to compare this column and this column, just so you can see kind of what's going on a little bit. And when you're there, when you have it kind of like this, well, we can talk about it. So, like, the fare, last year, their expenditure budget was $35,000, and this year, it's $38,000. Not a huge, you know, reasonable. District court, last year, 108, this year, 108. Comprehensive insurance went from $194,000 to $216,000. And that's just make a increase in our insurance every year, a bunch, a lot. Library, they're going from 110 to 130,000. And just to refresh your memory, that's primarily, Guna was asking, I think, for a dollar raise for, we can go back and look, a dollar raise and then 50 cents, and then more hours, I think, like, 700 and something hours, but we'll, we can go look. The planning department went from $85,000 to $108,000. Health and sanitation went from $78,000 to $107,000, so huge increases in those departments. Senior citizens, same. Extension service actually went down from 75 to 68. Public safety, it went from $784,000 to $842,000. And detention center went from $305,000 to $496,000. So, anyway, overall, the, the budgets are requiring $400,000 more. So, our total budget of those funds last year was 3.2 million, and now it's roughly 3.6. Okay? So, now, did I not bring that one piece of paper? So, I didn't, I don't think I copied it for you, but anyway, on our mill levy calculation, we're actually going to bring in 109, 100, $109,683 more. So, that's good, but it's not $400,000 good, right?
So, our growth, our department revenue increase with all the building homes, it only went up $109,000.
$109,000, 600, yep, that's how much more we get.
Wow.
So, really, you know, maybe two new employees or something is really about it, yeah. So, that's the summary.
So, out of, like you just said, I mean, and I, to, like, for planning, health and sanitation, for example, there's an increase in spending there because there's an increase in business and we had to hire another employee.
Yeah, so let's-
So, where's his revenue to kind of help show that that employee is needed to offset all this extra?
Yeah, so that's just the summary on the expenditure side.
I'm just curious.
So, now we can kind of go and look at any fund you want, like, so now we could look at, so let's look at our cash reserve worksheet. So, we could go down to the planning. So, we could look at the planning, Fund 2250, and then Fund 2270. So, it's not bad, so like on the, um, maybe, how could we look at this even better? I think maybe, why don't we go look at actually his revenue and his fund? So, let's go to the big, the revenue pages, we'll go to Fund 2250, so page 12. And so we can see So here, so go down to like charges for services, right? And you can see in this final budget column that we're budgeting thirty thousand, we're thinking we're gonna get thirty thousand in. And last year, we only actually budgeted ten thousand and we got twenty thousand. So it's, you know, roughly twenty thousand dollars more is what we're thinking we're gonna get in that fund. And in the other fund, about the same, twenty thousand more is roughly what we're budgeting and more, you know, fee, fee revenue, charges for services. So
So actually twenty thousand is covering almost all of the twenty three thousand dollar increase from the year before in 2250.
Yeah.
And then the other one was twenty two seventy?
Yep.
That was an increase of
So that's about twenty five, thirty thousand. And that one's getting about twenty thousand dollars more in revenue, so it's really like a net loss of like ten thousand.
And we could be surprised because maybe
We get more revenue or we get less, we don't.
Look at his increase on the search permits, Jessica.
Which fund are you in, doing, 2250? No, no, you're in 2270?
Yeah, 2270.
Isn't that nuts? He said he has fifty six. I just talked to him this morning, fifty six per permit. But you gotta be kidding me.
It's amazing.
It's crazy. And not slowing down at all, he said.
Yeah, because seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah. And in seventeen, eighteen, it was fifty five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't, so I think like, say the planning and health and sanitation, there's
They're sort of working themselves out.
And I don't think there's much you can do with them.
Right.
I mean, their budget is pretty much where it is. You've already, you know, hired your person, you know, I think, so I don't really see anything there.
And he raised the, the fee, so
Right, to offset, to, to offset the whole new person, truly. The li, let's, before we even get too carried away on specifics, let's just look at the overview of this cash reserve worksheet. So we have the top line, right now for the general fund, as is, which doesn't include any transfers going to any other funds or whatever, we would have a reserve of twenty eight percent.
And what do you shoot for you?
Thirty three is our max, twenty eight, I think, is good.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's not bad.
Better than we've been.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's good. The road, we'll just go down and look at this real quick. The road doesn't count.
Right.
It doesn't get any mills.
Doesn't get any tax revenue from your local constituents.
The next one is weed. That one is voted two mills no matter what, so it doesn't come in, it doesn't, it's not on that first sheet that we looked at. The fair, as is, no changes, they would end with fifteen percent reserve. Airport, um, doesn't count, we don't give them mills. District court, thirteen percent. Comprehensive insurance, I bring that way, way down to zero. I mean, I'm not saving to pay it, I'm just, just getting enough to pay it and be done, so that's why that's really low. Library, given everything, I've adjusted the mills, they would end up with, you know, nine percent reserves roughly. Senior citizens, ten percent. Extension, nine percent. Public safety, so, and then here's the, you know, public safety right now, so that's the one, so
That's the beast every year.
So right now it's at, you know, negative three hundred and seventy seven thousand cash. And I
What was it last year, do you?
Whoa, um, I don't have it. Yeah, I can go grab it.
No, it's fine.
We sure can, like before what? Yeah, so usually we keep it at like eight to ten, but if they did like, you know, they didn't, obviously, what we should do is let's go look at public safety. It's obviously something, they started the year with fifty four thousand negative cash. So that means they blew their budget expenditure wise or they didn't collect the revenue that we thought. So let's
And that would have been last July, just a month before the new sheriff came in.
So let's go, let's look at revenue and then we can look at last year's and So page sixteen, revenue, and let's see what happened here. So we budgeted Oh, it's not gonna be a good fit. So we'll just, um, the revenue actually came in pretty darn good. So for taxes, we budgeted, tell me if you guys are following me, we budgeted three hundred and eighty eight thousand and they, we collected three hundred and eighty four. So that's good. Concealed weapons, we budgeted two thousand, they actually collected a little more, thirty four, sixty five. Charges for services, we budgeted a hundred and fourteen, they collected a hundred and nine. They got some, oh, other miscellaneous, that's not really revenue, that's Mako proceeds for car accidents, I think. So I think the revenue is done, is good, like it was budgeted, right? We collected it, um, Okay.
Then you go to expenditures.
Let's go to expenditures.
And, yeah, and that's just public safety, so are the jails separate from that?
Yeah.
Even though it says board of prisoners under that, if they
It should
Oh, yeah, zeroed out there, okay.
Should be, okay. So now let's go to page twenty one.
Search and rescue, is that the one you mean?
Oh, no, in expenditures. Go to expenditures, page twenty one. So really they're budgeting, what is it, forty, like sixty thousand more?
In salary, do you mean, or?
Just in total.
So where was their overtime budget last year?
So last year I was just looking, I must have budgeted it actually in, I think I added that line one eleven after the fact. So the overtime was budgeted in the one ten.
Oh, okay, before.
Mm-hmm, and then I thought, no, I can pull it out.
Yeah, because when we just look at that, it's actually nine or ten thousand dollars less than it was in nineteen and twenty. But their, their big increases are probably coming from the Oh, where is, where is the big increase here? To compare with this other sheet we looked at first. Is that in the jail?
Yeah, so the jail was the
So this one, it was in, so it's sixty thousand on this sheet. You know, it was an increase of sixty, and it's an increase of sixty. But if you look at it, it's not, um, there's not any like one line item that's like, holy cow.
Yeah.
You know, it's wage increases, um, you know, workers' comp went up. Supplies are a little spendy.
And is some of that stuff in supplies or going for some of the nine one one this or that that's being reversed with the COVID money?
I don't, I don't know, no, no. The COVID money, that's in the four thousand fund, it's out. No, so we have that four thousand fund.
How much is in that?
Yeah, go back to this. And let's go to the second page of that. And go to Fund 4002. So he has two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars
Left.
Left. And he spent, what was it, Dawn? He, he paid, we got
Wasn't that nine one, we haven't paid for that nine one one system yet, have we? And that's like a hundred and some thousand.
That's what, that's what that money's for.
Yeah.
And you should make sure that everybody knows that. But we, he did, you guys, I think, did approve and, and he did pay ninety seven thousand also out of that four thousand fund for, what is, what are these? In car?
Oh, cameras?
The in car cameras.
The body cameras and the in car cameras.
There's two, so there's two separate, like leases kind of or payment contracts, I guess. So the in car cameras were ninety seven thousand. That was paid in full and that was paid out of that four thousand fund.
Okay.
And then you have the body cameras, which are
Forty five or something?
And I, I wrote it, there's little notes on your expenditure sheet. So the body cameras are five thousand, seven hundred, seventy eight dollars a year for five years. The tasers are four thousand, one hundred, sixty six dollars a year for five years. And the nine one one recorder, I think it's, it said, I had four thousand, but since then I think I actually got something and it's more like thirty five hundred.
So where are those?
Those are, go back to your twenty one, it's under object code three nine eight and you'll see some little notes.
Under which one?
Contract services?
Yep.
Three nine eight, yeah, tasers, five years, body cam.
Oh, I see, contract services.
So that's where those three are and then you'll see, then below that object code three nine eight, you see six ten and six twenty. And that is the lease payments on the vehicles.
Okay.
So I don't know if you can, you know, if you guys are, we'll just kind of mull it over for a little bit. If you think there's something there we could shrink down to help us out some. Should we go to detention center?
Yeah.
And just let me know if I, if I'm going too fast. So detention center, it's, it's a hard, it's hard to budget. Because we don't have any good actuals.
Right, and they're not a constant.
We'll look at, start, start with revenue, page seventeen. So, you know, we, all we did, we budgeted, um, under charges for services, a hundred and twenty thousand for board of prisoners and commissary five thousand, everything else is taxed, you know, funded with taxes. So I think, I think it's conservative, so hopefully it will come in better than that. And so I, I don't think we should change it. And then if we look at expenditures, page twenty three. Let's look at payroll, that seems so awfully high to me, doesn't it? Let's go look at Does that seem high, the two hundred and thirty one?
The payroll?
For six detentions? I'm gonna go look at Yeah, page twenty, or department twenty two.
Starts with forty, forty three, starts with forty three.
One, two. So I have seven employees plus twelve thousand in overtime. Is seven employees right?
Or the jail?
We're down to six right now, but
But if, if staffed at full, it'd be seven?
Right.
Okay.
Because one of them's like a sergeant, one who does all the ordering of the jumpsuits and the scheduling and the
And she gets paid a little bit more.
Yeah.
So it's right, that's ninety one maybe? It's right. Make sure nothing else is spilling there, they don't see.
What's our number here, if Jen called in, three five?
I have to check and see. Three five? Three six? I don't know. Three five five six? Oh, three I can tell you. You're gonna tell us? This is second here. Tell you. Three five five six. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if that hundred and twenty thousand inmates, I wonder what they, what kind of math are you done there?
So that is correct. So if you add all of those up, it adds up to the two thirty one, which is what's filling to that page.
For the salaries.
For, that's for the seven people, yep.
And overtime.
Maybe overtime doesn't, well, who knows? One will give or the other, right? Like if you don't have the seven, then you have more overtime if you, right? So, Ken.
So he kind of, he kind of did the, the revenue on the, I'm hoping that we'll get pleasantly surprised by the revenue on the detention center instead of a hundred and twenty thousand, because he kind of did it
Maybe it's one eighty or something.
He did it, I mean, like I just did math, that's four and a half inmates a day at seventy three dollars a day. They're paying customers, so if we, you know, double that, if we have eight paying customers, then we'll be at two forty.
What are we, how many paying customers do we have, like say now, do you guys have any, do you know?
I don't, I don't know, but he, he's working out something with the US Marshals too, to get federal inmates and actually, I had lunch with him, I think he said that there's something like ten DOC people in there right now, ten Department of Corrections and then there's three of our own and maybe one highway patrol.
We get the seventy nine for them, too?
I think we get seventy nine for them. Oh, the US Marshals are trying to broker a deal with them on that, I don't know what that would be, but the DOC is paying that seventy nine. So, yeah, I mean, if we just said
And let's make sure we remind him, because I was just looking at that medical. And he knows, he knows Roman, right?
Proper agency pays for their medical.
They know that.
Yeah.
Pretty good medical bill, this pay period, so and I don't know if they were all in, you know, hours or
If we had eight inmates a day from the DOC, that'd be six hundred and thirty two dollars a day. We'll just say three hundred and fifty days, we'll cut it short a little bit there, that's two hundred and twenty one thousand.
So it could be significantly better.
We could be doing a little, yeah, that'd be nice. If that came to be.
Okay, so then So we have Pilt, so in Fund twenty nine hundred. The only thing, so if you look at So we started the year with eight hundred and fifty five thousand. I'm thinking, I'm estimating we'll get three hundred and eighty one thousand, seven hundred dollars. We do have to fund the two hundred and thirty six thousand. That's a transfer to, um, retirement and the permissive health to cover the difference. So we have to spend that, so Pilt is already used to do that. Anyway, given, given that, we would end up with a million dollars in Pilt, so we, you know, obviously that's what we use to fund the sheriff, but
Right.
So say that again, Jessica, so I'm looking at
So look at this
Your available cash, eight fifty five.
Yep.
And then you're getting, and you're expecting a transfer of three eighty one.
That's what I'm thinking we're gonna get.
Okay, and then two thirty six will be going out for permissive and retirement? What's that, is that the retirement that we have to pay on payroll?
Correct, yep. And, and the mills aren't enough to cover it, so we, we fund it from Pilt.
And then the subtraction, minus And then the subtraction of $9700 there, next column?
It's a payable. Actually, it's a receivable. What is that?
Payable.
Oh! It's, um... So do you remember PILT lent money to the Superior TV District?
Oh, yeah.
That's the balance.
So that money will be coming back to us when they make the pay?
Over two more years.
Right.
Not in one year.
Okay.
But that is a receivable, so it shows up like that.
So then minus that, because that's currently loaned out, we have $1,011,000. Or $11,049.
Correct.
And what do you estimate? Will we need to dip in that for any of the other things? Or that's...
No. Because everything... So kind of how I did is I worked down. Like, I funded everything and then just left that one fund. Like, okay, what are we gonna do here? So like detention center?
Then to the public safety, this $377,000 minus in public safety. So that'll be coming out of this million-dollar PILT.
We would have to budget a transfer.
Unless we can find some ways to cut the order, unless we have more revenue than anticipated coming in.
But we budget that every year.
We budget a transfer to PILT. I mean, a transfer from PILT to public safety every year. Normally, not that big of a transfer. But we do. Every year, we fund it with a transfer. But I think what could happen, like, is the detention center... Right now, the detention center's taking a lot of mills to make it balance, right? But if that detention center's revenue goes up quite a bit, we're gonna end up with more cash in that detention center than we had or anticipated. And then next year, we can use that and, you know, move the mills over to public safety. So it's not... But that detention center is like the key, right? If it performs good, then I think everything will be okay if it continues at that level where we have to fund, you know...
And it should. If he can keep employees and keep paying customers, it should.
It should. And get his rates up. And, you know, actively renegotiate his rates and stuff. So I, you know, it's not...
Not the end of the world.
It's not the end of the world, but...
Big outcry from, you know, everybody in justice, the county attorney's office, to justice court, to the public, that we have this jail here, so we aren't shipping people to... And we learned later that Sanders County knew they had us over a barrel. And pretty soon, they went from $74...
To $90.
To $90 just because they could.
Jerks.
They told us they had some account if they...
They probably said raise them. Yeah, they'll pay. They'll pay, yeah.
We should open a jail in San Diego.
Yeah, no.
Right next to the pot shop?
Yeah, right next to my office.
Will the resort board help pay for that?
I think so.
The only other thing is just the Health Department again, out of the general fund. And so like at Sanders County, they pay for one FTE out of the general fund. That's it. Everything else is paid through grants, right? And I just want to bring it to your attention. And I know the Health Department is... I mean, I feel horrible for them that this is like the ongoing thing that never is going to end, it looks like. But just look at that. So let's go look at expenditures. Page three in expenditures, very bottom. So you can see the current year budget's $145,000. You know, last year was $91,000. 113, 105, 89. You know, but that... Anyway, it comes with a lot of other costs associated with it and...
Well, we could turn the page and look at their revenues because they get some school contracts. Just trying to get a better picture of that. So that page would be...
New revenue. Page one. So we're getting $67,000.
Health nurse fees.
Oh, there's health nurse vaccine and a health nurse...
Fees. Yep. The fees are the contracts with the schools.
So $80,000 from health nurse fees this year?
What's the minus 12?
Yeah, and there's a minus 12, 908 after that.
Yeah, the... Jen said, I can't remember. She adjusted it down. They're not gonna be there as many days or something. So their contract with the school went down.
Oh. So it'd be more like $68,000 instead of $80,000.
So it's 67.
67.
252.
Oh, I got you. Now I see.
Yep.
So $67,000 plus $25,000. They're expecting more on vaccines this year.
But then if she's getting, you know, she... If you put...
And that's where I think you should put the admin fee.
Asking that...
That's where I would put that admin fee.
To help offset that?
Help offset.
That just makes perfect sense to me, right?
So she's really out of the general fund. So the sum total of the Health Department's $145 is really more about $42,000 from general fund.
Is it cost to the... Yes.
Right.
Yep. You could look at it like that.
Because there's no other revenue we're gonna consider in there, none of the...
That is correct.
Because they're both are separated from that already.
Yep. Yes. So... I don't know what else. The library? What do you guys think about the library? So in the library...
Before, we gave them $110,000. And this year, they're needing $130,000?
Yep.
Can we go to expenditures and see where it's at?
Yep.
Maybe?
Probably in the raises? I don't know.
It is. In the new additional hours.
The board decided to do some different raises.
Yep. Which, you know, they probably should. They're not keeping up with the county at all.
And they were... They hadn't given raises in... I know there was two or three years they didn't give any.
Yeah, it's all in the additional hours and the wage. But it sure isn't... The library isn't even keeping up with the county raises, you know? And so it's...
Yeah, it was almost $20,000 in salaries difference. Everything else is the same pretty much.
So... Yeah. So what it includes, I went back to Gooden's notes. It includes $1 raise for everyone, $0.50 for subs, and an additional $780 hours for a new employee. The one thing... So we could look at payroll. I think I have... Maybe we'll go and look at payroll and make sure I have everybody's increases in there. So you guys know...
For the library?
Not the library, just all of them. Like, we have... Right.
Oh.
Like, we increased our, you know, from $10 minimum to 12. The deputy 30, the county attorney, deputy county attorney. But we'll... I think we'll go look at that. Make sure that I have everything that you guys want.
Yeah, I... It would just be... I think the only changes would be...
I'm just gonna go through and make sure I have them. What you can think of. And then the only other thing that I think is still undecided is the additional help in the clerk and recorders and attorney's office. So I guess Ellen was asking for...
At least a...
At least a halftime. Kellyanne was asking for at least a halftime.
I think just the county attorney's office.
So Jessica, you were saying that if the commissioners voted for everything that we all asked for, it was gonna be how much? Like, $300,000 or $400,000 more? I thought it said something because we...
Yeah, $400,000.
Yeah, $400,000. And then we only increased by like $109,000.
Arm arm and all.
We really thought we were gonna... This is gonna be a bad...
We were hoping to. We were hoping to.
Yeah. Yeah. So that is kind of a shortfall.
What can I... Can we chat about? Are you guys liking... I mean, are the reserves, you think, okay? I think they're fine.
I think you've done wonderful with them.
Okay. Good deal.
Considering not too long ago, there wasn't any.
Right.
So on the... And maybe we do have to go to this to attract somebody, but the current employee in the weed department is never retiring soon. He was making like 11 or 12 something. And I see that the new rate plugged in is $20 an hour.
Yes. And so what we decided there, if you guys recall, is Dave was asking, I think, for $20 an hour and full-time or and 30 hours a week. And so what you guys directed me to do was, no, we'll give him the $20, but we'll keep his hours the same. Or he was asking for 16 or something, but...
I don't know how we could figure out what would be a reasonable contract service in lieu of that employee. I'm worried that we might not even be able to get an employee even at that amount who wants to work that sporadically around equipment with chemicals. They have to go to school, spray school. And currently, the county contracts, or the state does, too, interstate highways, there's some they use... Some guy had a... Comes by and he sprays and he's got the stuff and the lights. What... I guess what would the total? $20 an hour plus his benefits, plus his whatever. I wonder if we'd be better off...
Just contracting it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's... What is the total?
Yeah.
Let's see.
I can do the math for the hourly rate, but I don't figure the Medicare. I guess you got it listed there.
Yeah, I think it's all there. We just could...
15, 9, 7...
Does it... Oh, it doesn't have a total on it, does it? Anyway, we could total that up. Yep.
That might just be food for thought.
13, 14, 15, 16. I don't know. $17,000?
Yeah.
And... I don't... It seems like that might be a great way to go, really. Because the only thing are... They spray for Missoula... They spray for the DOT, though, too, don't they?
Well, that's who I was thinking of. The guy out... The one out of Butte. Being on the weed board, though, you know... I know that the guy out of Butte comes and sprays interstate highway systems for the state.
But we do also. Do you know that?
Oh, we do.
We do. We have a contract with Missoula. We usually get a receivable. Like, we bill them. We do some work and see. And then, um... So you'd have to... So the revenue... Let's look. Let's look at revenue. See how much of that is. So we get about $12,000.
And from that two-point levy or mail levy that voted or whatever?
No, in contract. So they just haven't been received yet for this year. So go to page five in revenue. And you'll see down under charges for services, you'll see weed control contracts. So in 1920, we collected $12,000. In 2021, we haven't booked it yet.
This might be Jen with a quick question for us.
Okay.
Commissioners' room?
Hey, this is Jen Donovan.
Oh, okay, Jen. I'm putting you on speakerphone. You got Jessica here and Dwayne and Lori and Dawn and the video lady and basically...
Hi, Jen.
Yeah, so...
Hey.
Hi. So the commissioners were just talking about... You were thinking of creating a new fund for your... What is the administration fee?
Yeah. So right now, we have, you know, the vaccine billing revenue fund or the accounts, I guess. And what I'd like to do is separate our regular vaccine billing from the COVID administration fees. And then with whatever COVID administration revenue we receive, use that specifically to help fund like staffing for contracting or supplies or immunization supplies. Just the things that are continually the expenses that are not covered.
Are we still...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it sounds like a whole bunch of... And you're thinking it's like $20,000 that you'll have total?
I have no idea how much it'll be.
How much do you get per shot? If they have insurance?
I don't know the answer to that because they changed it. So like, there's a certain amount for vaccines given before a certain date, and then they change that amount. I don't know. I could ask next week. Let's just back in the office. But I don't have an answer for you for today. I have no idea what the estimated amount of revenue would be. But I just... I want to keep that separate from the other vaccine income and just use it for COVID stuff.
So I just don't know if it's significant enough to warrant that, though. That's my thing. I mean, even if it's say $20,000, it's a lot of extra accounting to create for $20,000 and for something that's gonna last... and for something that's gonna last, I mean, well, hopefully it won't last forever. But you never know, I guess. But, but I, I was proposing, I think you should just put it into the general fund to help offset your general fund expenses, just along with the other immunization revenue.
Well, then I would, I would request that my supply budget be increased then, or my staffing be increased. Because the whole purpose of it is to pay for things that I don't currently have funding for. I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I don't understand the backend of the accounting part, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna be like, you know, assuming that it's not gonna be a life thing.
Well, why don't we figure out, why don't we do this, Jen, why don't we figure out how much it is first? I mean, if it's, see, if everybody in our county got vaccinated twice, right? So what, like eight thousand shots?
Yeah, we've given, I, oh, I don't have the current stuff, but I know we've given approximately twenty-five hundred vaccines. So I don't know if there's a different billing amount for dose one versus dose two. And then again, like, we take into account that change in the billing amount.
Have we gotten?
I think it's gonna be fairly significant, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
Have, have we gotten any of it yet?
We just started billing for those COVID vaccines, I think she submitted a verdict claim last week, and we have not received any income for it yet.
Oh, so she would, she would know then, at least, because she's, she's billing for that admin. I see, okay, sure. Well, I don't know, I just, I don't see the need to do all of that extra accounting. But we can talk about it, I guess, again, once you figure out an amount, if it's, but like, if it's twenty thousand dollars, it just doesn't make sense to me to do a whole fund, and then we're gonna try to allocate, you know, your people to there, to this other fund for a couple hours while they're contract tracing. I mean, where, don't you still have quite a bit of grants, like, left over with COVID money in it?
No, not really. Actually, a lot of those expired. I did recently submit, like, interest in applying for some more funding to help contact tracing, just for staffing specifically. But no, the demand for COVID response, when I think COVID has contact tracing and supplies, is greater than the amount of money I currently have. So, I, yeah.
What, what is fund, what's the communicable disease grant?
Communicable disease of the intervention specialist, so basically, that one supports Amy Lomond's position, and then some of, like, the rest of our public health, so Amy Engel, a little bit of our, I don't think, none of mine.
But no COVID.
So that just allows us to do contact tracing and communicable disease investigation.
But COVID.
And COVID, we have other things going on, too.
But COVID could, would be out of that also, right? Or could be.
So, right now, I'm feeling like I need probably at least two or three full-time employees to, you know, FTEs, to support the amount of workload that COVID is creating for us.
They're gonna have to start giving you guys more grants again.
That would be fantastic, like I said.
Because that's, that's crazy.
I'm applying for everything.
You know, it's like, nothing's changed, right? It's, all of a sudden, it's just as much work as it was last year.
Yeah, we're back at like fall to winter rates and stuff. I think right now, we have approximately ninety-five people we're, we're working with.
Yikes. Are you gonna use all of your PEP, PEP disaster?
Yep, that money is pretty small, that also supports part of Amy's, Amy's position, so.
You could use all of that carryover, though, huh?
Like staff members, that I'd be happy to give to you. I'm just, I'm just looking for some more stable funding, and I feel like this is kind of self-funded in a way. But, um, yeah, but like I said, I don't understand the back work of the accounting system, I'm just looking for a way to sustain the staff and the supplies and all that kind of stuff that we need to do for COVID response that's not letting up.
Yeah, that's, that's crazy. So just let me know the amount, and then we can talk again.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Jen, bye.
Thank you, guys, all right, bye.
I feel so bad for her. Right, because you think, oh, it's gonna come to an end, I can get my life back and get going, and then it's, bam. Sounds like it's as worse as it ever has been. That's hor, just horrible. Um, so I guess we'll see, I mean, I don't know. If it's like twenty thousand or less, it just doesn't make sense to do it, to me, but.
Yeah, I think the only payroll, I think we'd put Dawn up at fourteen dollars an hour.
Did we?
Yeah, just because she had to take on the Board of Health thing, too, so. Am I not right?
I don't remember.
I thought, I thought so.
Yeah, because she'd take it, you know, Candace didn't have the Board of Health, and so, and then, and where Brittany's a brand-new employee, she's at thirteen sixty-five, she'd be making the same as hers, so I think we just bumped it up to fourteen.
So on that topic, then, what are we gonna do about Jill? She's, she's twelve fifty.
No, that was after, that, that was after we already changed her. That was one of the changes.
Yeah, and you said to put her up to twelve fifty.
Yeah.
Because we put everybody else, the new employees at twelve, so.
Yeah.
And so that's a dollar an hour raise of what she's getting, so.
Yeah, she would have been at twelve sixteen, given just the regular COLA, and you guys had me change her to twelve fifty. I have Claudia at eighty-two percent, if you guys remember. Who else is at eighty?
Hmm?
Eighty.
So I would like, I would like to see if at all possible, given Ellen at least a half-time person, if we can find it somewhere.
Is that you?
You are?
Not today.
What were the other asks, again, it was Ellen needed a half-time and?
And Kellin. And everybody else, I think you pretty much have already addressed. Like Dixie, she can now be permanent part-time.
Yeah.
Everybody else's wage increases, I think we've addressed. Those, those are the only two that are like, not, haven't been addressed yet.
And we've got Cheryl in at the clerk and recorders office, and I know that she's willing to work, so.
When are you starting your house? Still. So you're still on that?
Yeah.
And then Travis will start right away?
Yeah. I think, I haven't talked to Travis in a month.
He's so busy. I feel bad, he's gonna age fast at this rate.
I don't know, he's going out here for very long.
Oh, then I don't feel so bad for him.
He's going to Canada with a friend of his to hunt and meal deer, I think, with his bull.
Oh, geez.
And then he's got some bull permit for, up somewhere by Havre.
Oh, so he's all.
Yeah, if, if that hasn't burned up up there, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we probably won't see him for about the time I want to start building, maybe.
He'll be, he'll be busy doing other things.
At least we got the will.
That's all, yeah. One step at a time.
Yeah.
So I had to go to use the little boy's room, how did it end with Jen on the phone?
She's gonna find out how much, she really has no idea, how much the fee is.
And you were telling her that twenty thousand isn't quite enough to warrant the creation of the fund?
I just don't think, I mean, it just seems, what are you gonna do? Fund it with twenty thousand and then spend, because she said she needs three employees full-time to start tracing again. So what, you're gonna, you're gonna create a fund, add the twenty thousand, and then run it negative in two weeks? It's a general fund deal. Unfortunately, I mean, if, if it's an emergency, then you do an emergency budget to the general fund, because she has to hire tracing people, and that's where I would put the revenue. But we'll see, she's gonna find out how much it is, but. I, I'm su, it seems like they will have to, but they would have to give you grants again. You know, all the COVID stuff again, if that's the case.
And so Ellen, you're, you're part-time help, are you foreseeing that being, I don't know, four hours a day in the morning, or what do you foresee that it's looking like?
Yeah, I know, when we were talking, I, you know, thinking to come to some kind of compromise, you know, if we end up, if, if the county could afford a full-time person, if we, I know Job Share and Kellin brought up good points, that it could be difficult for a person coming in and having to change, you know, hats, but, you know, if, if it was somebody who would be full-time and in two offices, we'd probably want a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because those are our court days. Tuesday and Thursday down in Justice Court, usually every other Wednesday in District Court, sometimes it's Mondays. Trials can be really anything, jury trials in Justice Court are on Fridays, they can be any days in District Court. So that's what I would think, you know, part-time, but, I mean, if we could get somebody four hours, five, five days a week, would be great, you know?
And you could split it up, I mean, they could work eight hours Tuesday, eight hours Wednesday, or Wednesday and four hours Thursday, or however.
Right, yeah, and it's, and depending on if we're, you know, like, if we've got a trial.
Right, yeah.
Then we would definitely, you know, that's the day that you'd be in, you know, for that whole day or something, so. And it might be hard to find somebody like that that could be that flexible, but I, we would definitely try to work with it.
What, what do you think of paying that employee?
We raised the minimum, what'd you say, to twelve?
Twelve.
Yeah, I'd like to at least then start at twelve, maybe, you know? And just keeping in mind the other employees, I know, you know, so I think starting at twelve would be good. So I appreciate that we're starting at that now. Because I, I'd be looking more at this person to be like an administrative assistant. You know, I'm hoping Melanie, that we'll get to the paralegal point, this person will be more feeling like this, answering phones, filing, maybe hopefully, learning how to get the discovery out, learning the new systems, evidence.com, all that kind of stuff.
And so then you're here, and Cheryl's gonna be filling in, but her, the fill-in pay is ten for Cheryl. What if you?
She can.
I'm just wondering if you used her more, would she be expecting twelve?
No.
I don't think Kellin wants, she really wants more of a part-time, twenty hours.
Because I kinda ran into a couple little roadblocks when she, you know, a little bit, just, I want somebody that know the office, you know, know the procedures.
So then when you retire, can you head up the tone?
Yeah, exactly.
And were you thinking of just the same thing that she just laid out?
I didn't hear something.
Twelve dollars an hour.
Yeah, that would be something, I would be happy with that.
Just trying to get everybody's asks in order before we debate. Andy, you have any more asks?
So here is, I just took this.
Just give me shit, quiet man.
No. No, we're working hard over here, getting those tax base up, though.
I know.
I see that.
Yeah.
So you can tell me for that.
It's a good and bad thing.
Small increase in the sewer permits, there, eh?
Yeah, well, yeah. We'll get everything up.
So Ellen, three days a week, eight hours a day, that's twenty-four hours, so it'll just be twelve dollars an hour, no, no benefits?
Right, I mean, you know, if, if we could do thirty, that'd be great, because then we could offer benefits, of course, that, and I know from the beginning of the evening, that we, we didn't get as much increase in the mills as we were hoping. And then we have to worry about it continuing each year, but, yeah, I'm just, I, I would think at least for the next couple of years, we should, the county should be doing okay. I mean, I'm, just FYI, the, the mill value was up about a hundred and ninety, okay, you know? Yeah.
Maybe next year.
Yeah.
Get some of that new building or something.
Yes, that's what I really thought, it's just gonna be just a banner year, I know we're a little bit behind, but. So, I mean, if, if we could get, if, if, you know, if, if we split it twenty-twenty with clerk and recorder, or if we had, so that we can then offer insurance, that might open the pool. We did talk a little bit, just a few minutes ago, Kellin, about, you know, the person has to be, might be difficult being the flexibility and having to switch heads and what days, and when did I meet that person today, well, I meet that person too, so that might cause some problems, maybe if we do two part-time people. I think it would open up the pool if we were able to offer insurance.
What, what do you think, Kellin, does she, do you think you'd be able to hire somebody just for twenty-four hours a week?
I would sure give it a try.
Without insurance?
I would give it a try.
Or co, combined with insurance? Could, if we just did a, we're, we're facing a budget issue already, but we just did a part-time person, it'd be fourteen thousand nine hundred a year twenty-four hours a week. But if we did a more than that, then it would be insurance, it would raise the cost, but. And you say that all the schools now are having you do the, their collection?
Correct. If, if there needs to be one held, but yeah, they've all asked.
Do you charge them for that?
Yes.
And you don't think Cheryl would be willing to just come in more along the?
You know.
I think she will. She said she wouldn't.
I talked to her the other day, and she didn't really want to, and the days that I meet her in September, she's gone on vacation. And she, I mean, I can call her and ask, but from my understanding, she doesn't wanna work that much.
Is the sheriff coming in at two? Oh, just running late. What? They're just running late. Is it two? It is, he is supposed to be here at two. I'll text. No rush.
Well, what do the accountant think of these asks in our budget situation?
I think the accountant thinks the commissioners have to decide.
You wanna trade chairs for a minute? I don't really know numbers well.
Nope, nope. And to me, it seems like every other department has gotten help due to their increased demand, and it seems like Kellin should get the same. The recording is.
And the help that you allotted for, for Cheryl, at that rate of ten, you figured ninety?
It was real part-time.
Nine hundred and sixty hours?
Is that what it is? Let's look.
Yeah, eighty hours a month, yeah. Eighty hours a month? And that's plugged into the budget?
No, let's see.
Looks like on page, page seven in the back of the wages thing, page seven.
Eight hours a month.
Oh, Hockman says eighty up there at the top.
That's her total rate. Do you see? So she's.
Oh, oh, eight times ten.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So she's only currently budgeted at ninety-six hours for the whole year?
Oh. I thought it was nine hundred and sixty.
That would have been great, you're like, we're not far off.
Yeah, we're not far off.
It's already built in, but no, it's not the case. Let's look at revenue for.
For distraction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll look at revenue for, kinda like how we did for Andy's budget, let's look at it for Kellin's and see. So go to revenue. Clerk and recorder fees.
What page are we looking at?
Page one.
Right in front, okay.
So really right in the middle, pretty much, clerk and recorder fees.
Uh-huh.
So it was $27,018, $30,019, $35,20, $51,000 last year.
And then anticipating it back down to 30? You think it's gonna slow down?
We were just...
Slow down, just take a guess, yeah.
I, we were just being conservative, I guess, when we budgeted that. At some point, it has to slow down, right? I mean, at some point, all of this should slow down. Like Andy's office should go back way, you know, more normal. I mean, at some point, maybe, hopefully, I don't know.
10 years down their own, maybe.
When there's nothing else left, no other space to build on? Oh, I think that's true, okay.
I don't know, about 10 years, but I'll bet five years.
Yeah. Kellen, how much do you charge your schools for elections?
Supplies, and I thought about changing it, like what you said last year, just a flat. Charge of supplies and then usually 16 hours of, I don't know. I usually just did what Stacy did, just kinda went off how she charged. I think she did like eight hours of, but it's not enough.
You should do like a flat, like $2,500 or something.
Or like per voter. I thought about doing like a $2 per voter, because the more voters you have in the district, the more, you know, bigger election you're gonna have. Superior schools, pretty big.
How much would that be save for superior schools?
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
Just roughly, like? How many people vote? Five?
No. I don't know. I know we got 3,400 in the whole county. And Alberton School, that's where half of that's in Missoula, so that was kinda weird. And then St. Regis, maybe 1,500?
Yeah. I don't, I almost think you should make it like 2,500 or something, though. I mean, otherwise, they can run their own election.
Right.
Right? I mean, $1,500 or $800 for you to do all of that?
Right.
It's really low, it seems to me.
I just kinda charged what Stacy had done in the past.
Yeah, but I think it's...
Supplies and some, we just...
Yeah, but everybody needs to update their rates and stuff, I think. Okay, do you wanna talk about anything else for, oh, the sheriff's here, we could visit with him, and you guys could think about it more.
Does he hear for budgets, or?
Uh, just like every year.
Yeah, just, yeah. I don't think we have much to talk to the sheriff about, do we?
Keep your jail going well.
That's the only thing we need to do.
We're hoping that your jail will help the, historically...
So have you gotten on, I can talk about stuff in here that I didn't write down?
This is budget, so anything to do with the budget and costs?
So, the marshals, I just gave them the thumbs up. We're gonna be housing prisoners for them.
How many are they thinking they'll send you?
Well, right now, we got three, but that's on the lower end.
High scale?
Now agreed to a higher. So, we'll be at like $78 a day with them for three years.
How many, just curious, how many paying prisoners do we have in jail right now?
Well, we probably have, I'd say, 90 to 85% are paying. Because we got a lot of DOC and a lot of, a lot of probation.
But what's the number? Is that like three, or?
So we're sitting on, we're, we average about 13 to 15 prisoners, we've been averaging. So I'd say, three of those are ours, maybe four.
So 10. 10 paying a day on average, that's far. And maybe you can get more.
An average rate of 78?
And I could get more if I wanted. No, an average rate of, for the federal, 78, 85 or 89?
For DOC?
For DOC. And then, uh, no, they, sorry, DOC only pays 65.
That's the old one.
The old one, they won't, it's in the law, they won't change it. They're being sued by Missoula and Yellowstone County and all that. But like, if the highway patrol or another agency wanted to house somebody here, like Missoula, we'd charge them $89 a day.
So, yeah, so I think, I think it'll be better, right? So we only budgeted, when we met last time, we budgeted really conservative. I don't know if you remember, but we budgeted $120,000 in border prisoner revenue.
Right, right.
So I'm thinking we'll probably get a $100,000 more than that. Probably more like 220.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that will be, that will be helpful.
Back it up our, like I said, we've been taking it easy.
Yeah.
But here, probably another month or two, especially if we get this jailer position filled that we just lost. We fill that, and we keep all our jailers, then I'll probably start creeping our number up to 20. We go to 27, but...
Really?
We get 20 some beds. But we've been keeping it low, because we don't wanna overwhelm them.
Right, and let them get... That's fabulous.
And so...
So it could even, I had no idea we had 27 beds. I thought we maxed out it. We've never had that. So that's...
I got a call me every day for beds, and every day I turn them down.
But if, once you get your staff, would you feel they're...
Once I feel that we can handle it?
Yeah, then you...
Then we'll start creeping it up.
And a comfortable number would probably be 22 or 24. And then, you know, four of them are yours, and 20 are payers.
Right now, we're still working out kinks, and still working out the staff, not fighting with the staff, you know, over kinks. So, once we work all that out, we're good to go.
Very good. Well, that would be budget-changing, wouldn't it?
Then we got maintenance, then we got the maintenance at the jail.
Right.
Which is becoming an issue. Our maintenance guy, no, he's doing a good job. But, you know, but now, you remember, this building is, what, 20 years old?
30.
30 years old?
30.
The jail hasn't been touched for a lot of stuff, I mean...
And it's expensive, um...
Yeah, like AC unit. Last year, even before he came on, the AC unit froze up during the summer, and then...
Kind of oxymoron, an AC unit freezes up in 100-degree days?
Well, that's because, oh, I changed that. We fixed that, and then, but yeah, you know, everything's under stress, you know? We have no AC.
Hot water heaters and boilers and...
And the prisoners do everything they can to destroy all that. So, it's a constant ebb and flow.
Right.
So, and then we need to update security systems, cameras, door locks.
But you said the marshals...
So, so then the next phase, so if I agree to this three-year contract, that's step one. Then they get this thing called, I forget what it's called, but it's called like CARE or something like that. SER, or I don't know, it's called something. And that is a 10-year contract. But that contract is, we'll guarantee them, so this three-year contract, I don't guarantee them beds. They call, I can say, no, we don't want them, and we don't. But if we do take them, then we only charge this amount. Where we're gonna get kinda screwed is if they ask us to transport. They're only gonna pay $21 to, an hour to transport. Well, part of that 21 is their, for our, to transport, is their, you know, uh... Is there what?
A few one day.
Yeah, like that, or their, is there a...
The benefit or the cost?
Benefits, a cost. And then, so if we pay them $15 an hour, we're not, we're actually getting screwed if we're not able to pay them overtime, which they are gonna be paid overtime, because it's only then they can work it. So of course, that'll come off that 78. Hopefully, that'll balance out. We're not gonna transport them.
You won't transfer them every day, right? It's like, right.
It'll be like maybe twice a month. And it's just the Missoula and back. And that's a quick trip over. They're gonna, the marshals are gonna try to help us with that. Yeah. So, now if we get this other contract, we redo all those numbers, we put in bigger numbers, and then that's a 10-year contract, and we guarantee them 10 beds. So if they want 10 people in our jail, they get 10 people in our jail. And that's a 10-year contract at a higher rate, and also, depending on what we need, we could possibly get money to fix things. That's why I've held off on new cameras and new door things, thinking, oh, well, if we can get this money, that'll pay for that. Well, now they're telling me that this president's put everything on hold, and they're hoping now, hopefully, the first year, that'll kick on and they'll bring that plan back to do that. So right now, it's on hold. So we can either gamble and hope that they bring it back, or we can spend some of what money I have on redoing what we have. I guess we'll chance it, see what happens. So, but if we get that 10-year contract, that's the, that's where the money's gonna be. Because we probably will go to 89, if not 90, or more an hour, a day, plus up that transport rate.
Do they pay, do you have to just save 10 beds for them, or do they pay for 10 beds no matter what?
We have to save, well, you don't have to save, but they don't pay for it no matter what.
Okay.
But if they want...
So you have to have 10 beds available, really?
Even though they don't pay for it, they're not using it.
So it may not work out to be as beneficial as you think.
Yeah, but if we keep our numbers like at 20, and we already got some beds, then, you know, we only have a few more to fill.
Or if you had a low-risk person in there for a low, a small mistake.
And they're gonna...
Try and fill up your jail, you could, you could ask the judge to boot him, they could bump them to make...
And like DOC, I can say, you know what? It's gone.
I see. You could make room for them fairly quick.
And the other thing is, uh, the marshals are only gonna set out people that are long-term, that they think are gonna be here for a while. Because they don't wanna transport back to court for court. So, they're gonna get guys that are just waiting for a prison bed or something, and they're gonna be here for a month or longer. That way, you know, we're not doing a bunch of transport. I think it'll be a win.
Very exciting.
It will be if we can get it all worked out. So I told, sent the lady the email today saying, we agree to your terms, write it up, send it to me, and I'll bring it in for these guys to sign it. So, kind of, that was for...
So anyway, hopefully, we'll see a little revenue increase there.
I think so. That's really exciting. Anything else you wanna talk to?
I guess if we're gonna digest these two 24-hour-a-week employees, we'll digest and go on to the next, unless you have another, what was next on the, because the sheriff's basically done, right, Sheriff?
I guess so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I got a text to get over here, so I ran it up. I didn't realize, I didn't know.
I don't, I don't think we have anything to talk about with this budget, right? Yeah, I mean, we have, we understand the contracts, we understand the payments.
Did you, now, did you get all? Or are you still looking for them?
Well, I got them all.
Body cam, all that?
Body cam, tasers, 911 recorder. I even have the in-car cameras, which is already paid, though.
Should be.
It is, for sure. Yep, it was paid for out of the 4,000 fund.
Right, and then the, uh, 911 system.
And so that is gonna be paid for out of your 4,000 fund, and you have 282,000.
But then there's like a $20,000 a year maintenance fee on that.
Really, it's that much?
That's them to come drop whatever they're doing, to come do maintenance.
When are you having that installed? When?
They're starting on the 14th at training for two of my lead dispatchers.
But that 20,000, will that, next year?
Next year.
So, I mean...
Yeah, we got a discount. So I wanna make sure you get the right contract, though, because they sent like three different contracts, they kept redoing the contract on it. The final one they sent was like for 170,000, which was a discount. We got like a $30,000 discount on it.
I don't have any contract on the 911 system.
You're supposed to send it.
I just have the little ones.
Right. So the 911 system, he was in some training or something, everybody's in training, they say, and he was gonna get it to me ASAP, so I should have it by then. Hopefully, maybe I'll...
And that's, it's, it's really, um, we are just paying cash for that, right? It's not gonna be in installment.
The upfront one, the upfront one...
But then we have our 20,000, like maintenance or...
Right, and we're paying less cash than we thought. We thought we were gonna be paying 190, and then they discounted us to 170 something.
Very good. And then, so the only, the only item budgeted for out of that 4,000 fund then is the 170,000?
And then the 100,000 that went to...
Which is already gone, already...
So then I shouldn't be sitting on just over 100,000 sitting in there.
That's correct. It should be about 110, all said and done.
Depending on what that discount is, yeah.
Right, if it's 170.
Then it could be another...
Then you're at about 110,000. So, very good. So just, just keep in mind that, um, to spend, to spend anything above that 170,000, you guys would all need to approve that.
Right, right.
And it would...
On the 911 system?
Out of that fund.
No, if you have another idea in your head, she'd be reminding us, we have to approve it.
Right, yeah, for the 110?
Right.
Yeah, you said 170, you threw me off. So 110.
I said above the 170.
Yeah, she did.
Right, that's throwing me for a loop what that means. So basically, the 110. If I wanna spend any of the 110, yes, I know I need to come to them and pitch it to them, and they...
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
I mean, we can argue that point, but yes. It is my money.
Potentially save it for the...
Sheriff's office money.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Yeah, that's, that is the only control.
We all get along. We all been getting along.
No, the commissioners, really, that is the only control over elected officials, is their budget. And that is their, that is their control. But that would be great for, say, like, some of those jail repairs that are gonna be so expensive, right? Just not something that's, you know, that degrades so fast, like tracer bullets.
Anything, right, well, that'll...
But like something long-term that would really be beneficial to the, like, that would be great for the jail.
And Sheriff, just a question, is there, on the marshals thing, is there room for negotiation on that, or is that...
So that's funny. She called me, and in the original, said, hey, we'd like to start a negotiation. I went, great, let's start. She throws out the, the 78, and then throws out the 21. I go, well, those are great numbers. I throw out 89 and 30, and she goes, okay, we save 78 and 21. And I go, well, hold on. We're negotiating. And she goes, this is all I'm authorized to give you. We ran the numbers, this is it, we're maxed out. And I go, so, where, I literally said, will you get a dictionary? And I'm gonna get a dictionary, and we're gonna look up the word negotiate, because it means tutoring things from DC to Montana. We should be horse-trained right now. And apparently, you don't got no horses. Nope, these are the numbers, and then, so then I called the head marshal for the state that's appointed by the president, or whoever, and he's like, let me work my magic. Well, he doesn't, I got no magic. And came back and go, those are the numbers.
Those are the numbers.
This is all negotiation.
Yeah, I go, I will either, I'm really bad at this, or something. So, yeah, those are the numbers.
Which makes sense, I'm sure it's just a set, you know, like, this is what the feds will pay.
Right, but why call it negotiation?
I know.
I guess they stopped calling it negotiation, because it's not.
Probably were just hoping you were gonna come in low, like 60, like, yes, right, yeah. Maybe I'll say 50, and she's thinking, I'm gonna give you 78, and you just pay.
It was quite, and I thought before, I was like, why you get in here? Because I just got really confused on what negotiation means.
That's very cute.
Vegas version.
Oh, yeah. Just another day.
And, and so, so the marshals contracted, was there another contract? Is there anything that I need to look at, or just to be...
No, when that comes in, I'll make the rounds. And then, uh, the other ones we've already done.
Okay.
You're aware of them.
Anything else for the sheriff?
I don't think so.
Anything else you have questions on?
I had something and now it left me during that big, long story over there.
Sorry.
Oh, do we, uh, today is the day, are we doing one more day of stamping approval on something? This the day for the final stamp of approval?
Oh, no, we have one more day. So, yeah, so this is our final budget meeting and then next Friday we adopt the budget. And speaking of that, we need to do a resolution. We need to prepare the resolution.
For the budget?
Yeah, I think, you do that, right?
Yes, but I think that you have always sent me a template, somebody else's that I have filled in.
So you just find the last one and update it. And then the salary resolution, we need that done too for next Friday.
Did I miss what, did anything change? Okay.
No. And then, so just those two, so we can get that ready and then send it to me. I can look at it. Then we'll be set. What time are we doing that next Friday? Nine, at nine, okay.
Although, since he's here probably, but I'm glad everybody's here, maybe, hopefully we can talk, get them decided so they don't leave and find out later when we did. But the sheriff did have a request for an administrative assistant, but I don't know Sheriff, I'm hoping that maybe we can revisit it later in the year, see how you do with your current hands full and, you know, and maybe, you know, if, if you can start bringing a little bit more revenue, maybe then it will help fund said idea. What do you guys think? I'm going to be the only bad guy here.
No, no, you're not the only bad guy. I do think that we are spending a lot of money there, but we haven't in the past. We've always come up short, but if, I think we need a little more proof in the pudding.
That that jail's going to work.
Yeah, I do.
Because it's. Historically, the sheriff's office has always been something that we have to throw money at and borrow money from. So, I mean, that's, you came into the office with already a fifty-five thousand dollars.
Every county runs into that.
Yeah.
A lot of them are expensive.
So, yeah, we're just glad that you're getting the jail going and maybe that'll change.
But it's the number one priority, at the top of the list for you guys legally and then everything else is fire and down.
But, yeah, if you can get that jail running successful, it would just help out the entire county.
It's just, the problem is, is, is just employees as in, like the one guy left because he wanted to be in Missoula, he could make more money. So.
So we may always be that stepping stone for them, right? They'll come here, spend two years and then.
Well, yeah, and he was living there, but then he would stay with his sister during his workdays and then decide, well, I'm getting sick of the drive. So if we can hire local, if we get local to apply, if we hire local.
Who already has a house here, wouldn't have to look for a house.
Somebody has a house or apartment already set up here. That's the key, is getting that out there now. We're doing some stuff with the schools for graduation and that, for the seniors. Hopefully to encourage some of them that may be not going to college or something, that they could come in and apply. Me and Scott Kennedy have already talked about some things. At least give them an idea, a suggestion.
That's really a great thing, I think.
Thank you.
Like a job shadow, servant.
Yeah, I guess I can think of some kids that would be great at that, that probably would never even consider it or know it was an option.
And so we're going to start with Saint Spear and then we'll probably reach out to the new Saint Regis superintendent and then try to reach out to the new superintendent for our, we want to do something like that with all of them.
Very good.
We are going to be more in the public, so like at the fair and all that. That stuff costs money, you know, buying.
Had a lot of compliments, so.
Yeah, buddy.
First time I've walked through the fair and got compliments from the sheriff's department, being there.
Set up a table with coloring books and risk bands for the kids and all that. But, you know, that's a thousand bucks right there, you know, boom, boom, stuff adds up.
What sort of coloring books did you buy?
You'd be surprised how they, they get you because they know what you need.
All right, well, thanks for coming down. So then, uh, the other two kind of unresolved, which maybe we should talk about while we're here, not surprising, like budget adoption. The, uh, I guess Ellen doesn't really get the revenues, but maybe just, how's Justice Court's revenues doing?
Let's look at those.
Getting any extra fines or tickets to kind of help with the high cost of justice and prosecuting?
Wait a minute, we have, we bring in seventy-seven thousand.
Oh, oh, good.
From the state. They pay, they pay my part of half my salary and my insurance.
So page one on revenue. So let's look at, we can look at all, let's go down, let's start at charges for services. So we can see, here's the attorney fees. So those really haven't changed. Which is so crazy, but.
Page one, charge.
Page one, revenue. Charges for services kind of in the middle.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, okay, I was looking down the bottom, it's the JP Court stuff, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, or up here.
So attorney fees. So those are pretty consistent, they haven't changed much. The state share is half of Ellen's and you can see it went from seventy-two to seventy-seven. Justice of the peace. This is their, what they charge, superior, maybe, I don't know, one of our other.
Town contract.
Yep. Clerk and reporter fees. Those, you can see that. Election. I, I think we should increase that, but.
And that's just a guess, because I.
It's all good, your budget, yeah.
I don't know if I'm going to run the elections or not.
Yep.
One will even be held.
For the schools? In all cases, there's not one.
We don't know.
Right, they may, they may not have anybody interested and it's a default acclamation.
So treasurer collections, they went up slightly from fifty-eight hundred to sixty-four hundred. Health nurse fees, they went up last year, but now they're going back down. And then the health nurse vaccinations. Why don't we have any revenue for that? Why do we only have fifteen hundred dollars? Doesn't that seem weird? I mean.
For what?
On the health nurse vaccines. Look at the, why is it at one thousand five hundred thirty-one?
Maybe they didn't give as many flu shots instead of COVID shots. I don't know.
Maybe.
Probably weren't charging them.
Because it's only been in a month, July to.
No, last year.
Oh, last year.
So it looks, so like, yeah, nineteen-twenty, it was six thousand nine hundred seventy and then it dropped to one thousand five hundred thirty-one.
That's the only thing I can think of is everybody got COVID shots instead of flu shots. Right, I don't know.
And they're just now billing, she was saying they're just now billing the first, for the first.
They were so busy that they didn't.
So anyway, so that one's kind of, um.
Holy cow.
But we are budgeting twenty-five thousand, so I think it's almost as if she was budgeting that there for a while. It must have been her thought process. That's where she was putting those admin fees.
Look how much, I'm getting heavy, but JP Court revenues, look how much the revenue went down from, like in eighteen, it was six thousand sixty and then last year it was one thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, so it's possible, there are some, um, it's probably actually about thirty-six hundred again. My guess is there's a receivable that hasn't been recorded yet in that twenty-twenty-one, so that June. So it's probably, I can tell you actually what it is.
You like the county share of the half of tickets paid.
So what happens is they deposited in July and when I go and prepare the annual financial report, I'll, I'll book a receivable and book it back. So it's probably like seventeen hundred, it's probably about thirty-six hundred. Same. But still, either way, at one point it was much higher, right?
Yeah. Well, look at the fines in Justice Court were ninety-one thousand in twenty-nineteen and last year the fines were sixty-four thousand.
Why is that?
I don't know, part of it, but we do know that the, uh, the troopers and deputies were being asked not to, certain things they were doing, you know, warning and release. So we were seeing that, we weren't really seeing.
Yeah, during COVID, cracked windshield, driving while suspended, no driver's license, they were actually, you know, the officers, by their supervisors were saying, don't stop those cars for their, for the officers' protection. So we knew, you could just see the tickets, not only the money's way down, the tickets were way down. At one point, they were almost, last year it was like half booked, they normally do. Still have a lot of the PFMA, you know, that's stayed, but the, um, driving infractions, that's where they saw the big hit. Lot less tickets during COVID. Back up, but, yeah. And then also with less people driving. There were a lot less people driving, so they're not citing as much. But, yeah, they, and that was with Sheriff Boom, which, you know, was a good idea for officer safety. Unless it's something serious, you see a cracked windshield or a, you know, fire plate, don't stop them during COVID.
I know there's plenty of them going ninety out there now.
Even the trucks are going eighty.
Yeah. Okay. So what do you guys think of the two asks in front of us with the county attorney, wanting what, three days a week? Kelan wanting three days a week?
Well, they want twenty hours.
Twenty-four, eight times three, twenty-four. Could be under a thirty-hour cutoff for insurance.
I see what you're saying.
Well, I think if we're going to fill the needs and.
So Kelan, how long does it take you to do payroll?
Depends. Hmm, sometimes two days. Usually start on Monday, depends if I get all the ten cards in on time.
So then you have eight days of not doing payroll. So then, what do you do in those eight days? We have recording.
And we have elections.
But that's only, what, a couple times a year?
You guys, I gave you like the increase in my workload and then I have all of the numbers. My workload has, it's increased and we're having a hard time. I'm just asking for a little bit of help, just a little bit. Just a little relief.
Cheryl's.
But I need somebody in there who's going to be there and do the job, you know, for three days a week. So I can leave and be comfortable. So if somebody comes in and needs to look up a document or if they need certain things, that I know that that person is going to be able to provide it to them.
And Casey can't do that?
We have mandatory trainings we're going to have to go to. The state is implementing a brand-new voter system and the Secretary of State is the mandate, like doing mandatory trainings. So that's going to be implemented on January one, where we have a primary election in June. So there's going to be multiple trainings that we're going to have to go to. I don't want a new system, but we decided to implement it. So it's going to be very time-consuming. I just don't think there's a workload here for two hours a week. Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I need, I need some help. Drowning.
Much primarily drowning, would you, something?
I can't get my filing done, my recordings backed up a week, my voter registrations are backed up. There's things that need to be done and I don't feel like I'm doing them. I don't take time off, I'm there forty hours a week. And if I get somebody to submit, I'm not going to take any more time off, I'm not going to take advantage of that.
And both you and Casey do the recording?
Yes, I'm training her how to do it. She doesn't and then I review it. So I'm teaching her how to do it.
So what do you think?
I say if there's a need there, we better fill it. You caught me in a good mood.
Talking about Ellen, you're talking about Kelan?
Boom.
Wow, okay. Well, in, in twenty-twenty, Kelan's office, uh, in recorder fees was thirty-five thousand nine hundred and four and last year it was fifty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, which means just from a year ago, she brought in an extra fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to the office. And if we did what Commissioner Simons says, twenty-four-hour-a-week employee at twelve dollars an hour will be fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, which would still, she covered, covered that, but I don't know if we should see how it goes after a year, if we're still needing that person.
You can do that. That might be a good idea to do it that way.
Because historically, the offices had three people in it. When I started, there was three people.
There was three people in there when I worked in there too and everything was done by hand, typing checks.
No, I get it.
Wow.
The workload has increased over, was it thirty years ago?
Well, every, I mean, everything was done by hand, now you'd have to.
I know, but we still have to input.
Enter it once and it goes to.
I know. I get it, but everything's increased. I mean, the workload is, is bigger.
We had just as many claims back then than you do now, so. And we sold, and we sold food stamps out of the office on top of that, so.
I understand.
Technically, you probably would want to revisit all of your additions that you've added on, right? For every department.
Right, that's always a reserve, right.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, if it doesn't, if all of a sudden it drops off.
We have to do a riff.
Just to, I mean, because right now you're hiring for all of this additional work and that is pretty much across all departments. So it wouldn't just be, you know, clerk and reporter person by any means.
We'd have to revisit.
All of them, because they're all hired for this additional work.
Right.
So you're, so you were thinking twenty, what are you guys thinking, twenty-four hours?
Well, I was just saying twenty, because isn't it easier to have somebody three days a week at eight hours a day than saying, eight, eight, now you're only here at five or six.
Or then you get somebody who's like, no, I want to be full-time, so I want health insurance and then you, then you flex and they each get twenty hours?
What was that?
Said it too passive. So what happens if you get one good employee and they're like, yes, but I want to be full-time? Then you could, like, you know, you could be flexible and then go twenty and twenty, right?
Right, so twenty-four.
If you were to say, get a good employee applicant.
I don't know, I guess, that would be approximately another thirty thousand dollars we're adding to this fifteen thousand per employee times two.
I know it's not a, a big revenue, uh, bringer in our, Jessica, but, uh, how, what does Alberton pay us? Just a couple thousand dollars? Is it a year for legal services? Because I, I almost think I should go to their council, we've had a couple trials because of Alberton cases.
Yeah, I think it's six thousand, let me look, Ellen, let me look. Yep. Let me look, I don't, could be.
Yeah, I'd be afraid that they'd come back there and say, well, actually, we're thinking less, because they don't see me very much.
Right. No, I wasn't saying revenue to make you think, your office is not a revenue. Right. So, I wasn't saying revenue to make you think, your office is not a revenue...
It made me think about it, because we were, I had actually talked to Andy, I think maybe the last time we were budget, we were talking about with all the septic. And so, I asked Andy, I said, are we seeing more in Alberton City? We're not, it's outside of Alberton, because I was thinking, is that something that we could look at with Alberton?
Yeah, well, you're, don't think, I didn't mean that, I mean, your office, your office by design is not a revenue generator.
Yeah, yeah.
We pay a very high price for justice, and we hope, no, that's a cost, a cost of doing business.
Right.
You have to have a county attorney.
Yeah.
$6,000. You get two payments of $3,000?
And I think that's probably been, I'm in my fifth year, so I bet you it's probably been the same amount.
It has, for, yeah, I went back three years, so it's been...
So, I bet you it is, so, I mean, that could be, it's not gonna, of course, do the shortfall, but it might not hurt, and also, because we have had a presence there.
And some felonies, like that bar, gun bar case.
Yeah, it actually went to trial, and we got a conviction, so I think, you know, maybe now would be the time to swoop in, because that might still be fresh in their minds. I don't know, I think Alberton also does pay towards law enforcement, and Superior does.
They both do too, yeah.
Yeah.
That's in the sheriff's budget, though.
Yeah.
They did?
Yeah.
Well? What do you guys decide? Can I help you crunch any numbers, anything to help you?
I did it kind of primitively, but that's about right, I admit. Unless, because we're not involving any other benefits or insurance, or, it would just be $12 an hour times eight hours a day, times 52 weeks in a year.
So, you want to do it at 24 hours?
Oh, well, are you saying we should do 20?
No, I was just asking what you wanted.
I just thought that 24-hour, eight, three, eight-hour days.
Yeah, and then we have to bump it up times... They will, would they get retired, PERS?
For, for what, I'm sorry?
At 24 hours?
You would, right?
Yep.
K-Bear, is that correct?
Uh, it's 960.
Yeah, so it'd be more than 960. It's a thousand, yep, so you would, so it'd be times...
Oh, there would be another benefit.
Seven...
What if...
About $17,200. At 24 hours.
So, then are you still gonna utilize Cheryl then, or are we just not gonna just...
We would remove her, I guess.
Unless, like, come into, if somebody gets ill or something, something like that, some emergency, then I would, but I, I wouldn't put on call-in rent.
You'd have enough hands to stuff ballots? If you use me again, because I was pretty good at that.
I'll use you then.
Holy job, you're...
Sounds kind of, sounds kind of braggy, Roman.
No, I...
Are you bragging?
All I can do is stuff envelopes, I'm not smart enough to do that.
He's not allowed to do anything else.
I'm bragging in a dumb way.
Like, I was so good at that.
Yeah, I was really good, give me that job.
Yeah.
At least I didn't have to lick the envelopes that you were...
Oh, so, sticking, yeah, those are good.
We have to glue them.
Oh, that's right, with a glue stick, that's right, with a glue stick.
You can't put them through the postage machine because they don't stick.
Okay, and Ellen, in summation, your, your ask is 24-hour-a-week employee.
Yes.
And you can mix and match, what day of the week, eight hours a day?
Yeah, if we can find somebody who'd be willing to do that. If we need somebody who needs a set schedule because they have children or, you know, work schedule, or they're going to school or something, we'll, we'll work with that as well.
And they're probably gonna help you with the phones and with the...
Discovery, filing, setting up appointments, interviews, trial prep. A lot of the, like, heavy lifting stuff, helping with motions, getting all the exhibits ready, that would still be on Melanie. But just trying to have somebody do a lot of the stuff to take, Melanie's the notary. That'd be great if we got this person to be a notary too, just so, you know. Because it is, and it's so convenient, I think, for people in the community, if they, if Melanie's here, you know, to get things notarized. And I know the treasurer has notaries, but they, they just do cars, so...
And I send people up there because Trowest, unless you bank over there, they won't notarize, so that's why I send...
Do they charge people over there? I know the sheriff's office has...
I'm not sure.
A notary, but they're not, yeah, they're...
Yeah, I don't know, they're sketchy, yes. Yeah, and I think they, do they have two now, the sheriff? I thought there were two that were gonna...
Well, it's still, I mean, they still, if we need somebody, something notarized, they have to do it, because we paid for their notary.
Did you?
Only because my understanding was he didn't want to do people outside of sheriff's business, so I didn't know that...
Okay, so on the subject of Ellen's request, do you have room for this person? Can they all sit on a ball like Melanie can?
That's, that's what we talked about too, where I was saying that to, we were having, Gordon Hendrick was helping Deb out with our forfeiture stuff, and he was using the juvenile probation officer's desk, because he doesn't come out too often, the Missoula juvenile probation, he covers mineral county. So, Gordon was using that desk, and then he's also trying to help us with the evidence room. We got in on a weekend, and we probably did maybe six or so hours one day, we got through maybe 30 or, well, no, maybe like 60 or 70 cases of evidence stuff, but barely, barely did it dead, so Gordon's helping out with that. So, part of me was thinking we might actually use kind of the juvenile probation officer's desk, where Shirley Awata was, which is initially the crime victim advocate.
By the elevator, yeah.
Yeah, and so it would be in the office with Deb, and, you know, hopefully that wouldn't be too much of a distraction for Deb, but, you know.
Okay, regarding Ellen, what says you, Commissioner Simons?
I said, let's vote on them.
You're okay with the county attorney? Okay, so I'll, I'll concur with the county attorney request, and then how do we sit upon Kelan's request? You already said vote. I hope we can get some applicants. I'll concur with Mr. Simons.
24 hours for each department? That we, that's what you guys were doing?
Seventeen thousand compiled.
Okay.
Keep on bringing in the revenue, K-Bear.
Oh, thank you.
Don't have any choice, do you?
No, not so much, sporting events, thank you.
I think so, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't want you to leave, I didn't want you to leave and find out that we didn't include you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
I was just wondering about my department raise and back pay for when I got hired on.
Well, I think we, what we bumped up here...
They bumped it up to $16 an hour.
And I'll go back to July 1st.
July 1st? I was told when I got hired that I'd be back paid for when I got my boiler's license.
Well, that's part of, that was part of the job, wasn't it, just getting his boiler's, I mean, that's part of the job description, isn't it?
Yeah, I thought it was.
Well, I was, I was told that I'd be back paid upon receipt of the boiler's license for the rest, when I got hired.
Was that in here in our reading?
Yeah.
So, it should be in the minutes. We'll have to get the minutes and see.
I'll just check.
Back pay, I mean, during budget time, we said that?
When I got hired on, you said I'd be, when I got my boiler's license, I'd get my raise, when I got my boiler's license, and then I was told you would have to wait till budget time and then get back paid, so...
Should be in the minutes.
Right.
What, and what, when did we hire you, Norm?
Hired me the 29th of August.
Saying it?
Yeah, hired me the 29th of August, I got my boiler, boiler's license.
Do you guys have the minutes on the website or anything?
On the 15th of December.
Yes, minutes on the website, but I can go pull them up quickly enough.
What were you, what were you hired at?
At, uh, 14.
But then I don't, I think, I don't know, do you remember what we were gonna give you for a raise?
I was just told a raise, that's all I was told.
Yeah, but it wasn't really an amount, but I just thought that that was just part of the...
I did too.
The job description is you have to have boiler's license, but I couldn't be wrong.
Or did we hire him, everybody got a raise that was working here at the new budget, and we hired him and said he wouldn't get the raise until he got the boiler's license?
Oh, maybe that, maybe that could be...
Sounds like he's saying...
A 53 cent an hour raise.
I mean, we'll, we'll check, Norm.
Yeah.
Because that could have been what happened too, is that you were so new that maybe you didn't get in on the recently approved raise for county employees that was about August when we...
I've never got any details on it.
So, maybe we said, get your boiler's license, and you too will receive, but we'll check.
Yeah, but then what was Joel giving? I mean, he probably got the...
Joel was way less, because memory...
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Where is the minutes, Norm?
Well, I don't know if 2020 is on there, if they're on my drive, and they're in the commissioner's drive.
Go pull it.
And Norm, was that August 2020 that you were hired?
Uh, 29th of August, I believe, that was when I was formally hired, I don't remember when they, I can't remember, I think it was a week or so before that.
But it was 2020, a year ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And those aren't on here?
Oh, yeah, it was right after that.